All right, we are recording. And live.
Great. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the City of Newbury Port zoning board of appeals for our hearing evening of the. Pardon me. The 28th of June. We're at 7:00 PM, so we're going to go ahead and get started. It is a slightly short meeting this evening, but that said, we usually like to allow a few moments for folks to sort of trickle into the room. Before we actually get anything substantive going, but as we do that, I'm going to take a moment to just introduce the board. Establish a quorum. We'll go through our agenda this evening based on the the agenda that's published. Short though it is, at the City of Newbury Port's ZBA website. Anyone who's logged in or logging in that isn't already familiar. Everything that we're doing this evening will be put up on the screen. Caitlin Sullivan, our city planner, will be. Running the PowerPoint through Zoom, so everything that's being referenced will be up on the screen. However. Everyone and anyone is welcome to go direct to the city's website at the Newbury Port ZBA and you'll be able to access. All of the materials that have been submitted or filed by every applicant. So anything that we have. Members of the public have access to. So allow me to introduce myself. My name is Rob Champetti. I'm. The zoning board of appeals chair and this evening we have. A full board, at least full for us, though we understand that very shortly the ZBA will be welcoming two new associate members to our board, which will give us flexibility in the event that one member or more is either conflicted out or. You know, actually has a life outside of ZBA and can't make an evening. So. How we can continue to have the business of the city's zoning board move forward. So I'll take a moment to introduce the board this evening. With us is Mr. Stephen Delisle, our secretary, Mr. Ken Swanton. Member Walter Bud Shannon, member and Mr. Gregory Bennet, associate member. Also this evening online is Caitlin Sullivan, our city planner. Andy Port, our our zoning director, I'm sorry, our planning director and Miss Gretchen Joy, our keeper of the minutes. So on that point, when any member of the public should wish to speak in connection with an application. Although many of you may already be well aware of this, we just ask that you give your full name and address. So that Ms. Joy can record your name and address and keep the keep accurate minutes. So without further ado, I'm going to call the role. I'll establish a quorum. Give a quick lay of the land and we'll jump right in with the this evening's first matter, which is part of our. Business meeting, or actually it's part of our our pre-meeting, which is a minor modification. We'll do that one first. We'll then do a continuance that's been requested by an applicant. On the Merrimack Street application 20208, and then we will move into our only substantive continuance of an application. This evening during the public hearings, which is 2224 Market Street. So. Having said that, I'll call the role and members of the ZBA, please just respond by saying either. Here or present, Mr. Stephen Delaw.
Here.
Mr. Ken Swanton. Bud Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Gregory Bennet.
Here.
And Rob Champetti, I'm here. That is five presents. We do have a quorum, so we will continue with the business of the ZBA this evening. Just as a side note, it's kind of a procedural one. We require at least four voting members of the ZBA to be present in order to establish a legal quorum. We have five. Mr. Bennet will be will be participating in all of the deliberations and questions. But we will. We will have a a full voting member will have basically five voting members, which will include myself, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Swanton. Mr. Shannon and Mr. Bennet. So all five members that are present this evening will be the five legal voting members. And will participate in all deliberations as well. All right. So. Basically, what we'll do, and I know it's a it's a short agenda. I suspect that all those here in connection with both already understand the lay of the land. So in the interest of time, I'm going to dispense with the what we're going to do and we'll just do it. This evening. So we'll begin with the first matter on this evening's agenda after having called our role. We'll go into the minor modification request. This is a minor modification. Brought to us on the property address of 161 Water Street. And this is a requesting connection with an a permit that was granted on docket 21-12. So that was a 2021 application and it was a special permit for nonconformities. And so maybe we hear from the applicant with respect to the request in the minor modification.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay.
We can.
All right. Hi, my name is David Anzac and I'm here with my wife, Patrice Anzac. We live at 161 Water Street. As you mentioned, we we were granted a a permit on January 11th. Actually, we. We did it twice. We did a one story, which was approved, and then we. We did a major modification to that for a two story, which was also approved. However, given economic conditions and costs of things, we decided for right now to just go with a bigger deck. So as you can see in the in the drawing below the existing structure in the front. And the deck in the back, the deck is the exact footprint that the addition would have been 16 by 20. And the other addition that we're we're looking to get approval for is a slider, just changing a regular man door. To the existing deck, changing that to a slider to the new deck. So if you that's I sent this sort of piecemeal, I apologize, but it looks like she's got everything. So these are the elevation drawings for the proposed for the proposed deck. So. The one on the left is what you would see if you're standing out on the rail trail behind the water treatment facility. That would be looking directly at the house from the water. And you can see the the stairs go up from the back, left to right, and then you can see the addition of a slider there. I don't know that there's a whole lot more to say. It's I think it's pretty simple. I've gotten letters of non-opposition from my neighbors on either side. They're both fine with us doing this. And I guess I'll just open it for questions if anybody's curious about the design or or any other. Details.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Isaac. We appreciate the presentation. We'll certainly get to questions. So members of the ZBA, having heard the the presentation, we will. It's a request for minor modification. Do we have questions and we'll start? We'll just start with. Anyone who has, you know, questions beginning with Mr. Delisle. We'll see if there's any questions regarding the request.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Anzac, I I think I heard you. You presented this piece of information, but I just want to make sure I understand it. So. The proposed deck will be the same footprint as what the proposed, but now postponed addition would have been. Is that correct?
Correct. Yep.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Swanton. Ken, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
We can. We can hear you.
Okay, no questions for me.
Great. Bud, any questions from you?
No, no questions.
All right. And Mr. Bennet, anything, anything for you?
No questions.
All right. I I share that. I think it was clear enough and fairly straightforward for me. So I have no questions either. So we'll close that portion of the public hearing, or I should say that portion of our. Evaluation as a as a minor modification. So we'll go into the deliberations and with. Deliberations on a minor modification, members of the ZBA, we just have to make findings as to. A whether or not we deem the request by the applicant to indeed be minor in nature as a modification and in. And as such, not requiring further scrutiny and notice to abutters and and sort of a greater level of. Of you know, granular granularity on the on the application. If in fact, we each make that determination, we can we can move this forward to a vote. So why don't we just start kind of deliberations and and determination, Mr. Delisle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This appears to me to be a rather minor modification of the. The prior. Application that was approved. To the extent that the footprint of what was asked for will be the same. So. Going out from the structure backwards, it seems like it's even less than what was asked for. Previously in that there was a deck, I think attached to the prior approved plan. So I, from my perspective, this seems to be a minor modification.
Okay, and Mr. Swanton.
I agree with Mr. Delisle. This appears to be a rather minor modification. I'm assuming the applicant wants to. Keep open the option to do more down the road, but what they're proposing right now is certainly minor. So I'm I'm very comfortable.
Mr. Shannon.
I agree with my colleagues. I also see this as a minor modification and can support it.
Good. And Mr. Bennet.
Yes, I would agree.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. I I agree as well, and I also can support it. So do we have a motion? Closing that portion of the hearing on the minor modification. Is there a motion to approve the minor modification at a second?
This is Ken Swanton. I'd be happy to make the motion in our staff report to. I moved to deem the request minor and approve the minor modification request for 161 Water Street. With a certificate of vote to include language clarifying the applicant's approval for near term deck improvements. As well as the option to construct the original plans in their entirety at a later date. Provided that the subject special permit. N C has not since lapsed.
Okay, a motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Bud Shag and I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded calling the role, Mr. Delaw.
Yeah.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The eyes have it. Motion carries and the minor modification is approved. Mr. Isaac, thank you very much to you both for your presentation and good luck.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, moving now into our. Our next. Or I should say our first public hearing. This is a this is a continuation of the matter of Walda Realty LLC care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa. LLC 200 to 208 Merrimack Street. This is a two part application for which which has been continued from the hearing on May 24th, 2022. It is a variance request as well as a special permit for nonconformities. The applicant has requested continuance to the hearing of July 28th. And we can just simply the applicant's attorney attorney meets not here this evening. But has asked us to just act on that request. So do we have a motion from a member of the ZBA? To continue the matter to the hearing of 728.
Chairs Caitlin, just a point of clarification, July 26th, please.
26th. Sorry, I see the I see the letter here and I. That's right, it's the 26th. Thank you.
I'll make that motion, Stephen Delisle. Motion to continue the variance. V A R 22 dash two and special permit V N C 22 dash seven applications for. 200 to 208 Merrimack Street to the evening of July 26th, 2022.
Second, Ken Swanton. Very good. Motion's been made and seconded, calling the role on the motion to continue to meeting of July 26th. Mr. Delaw.
Yeah.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, yes, that's five in the affirmatives. The eyes have it. Motion carries and the application is continued to 726. Thank you. Okay, our. Next and final public hearing, which is also a continuation from. The meeting of June 14th. This is the matter of the addresses. 22-24 Market Street Douglas C. De Shane's attorney Doug De Shane's attorney for the applicant. Three part application. It is a special permit 22-1 exterior demolition in excess of 25%. A special permit in 22-2 convert the existing lodging house into an in use number 105. And finally, a special permit for nonconformities 22-13 to construct additions to the rear of the preexisting. Nonconforming structure. And this application was already originally open and is now continued. Attorney De Shane, do you have the floor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Douglas De Shane representing the applicant. If we could move to the next slide, please. As I said, I'm with Finer and Nicholson here in Newbury Port. I represent Down East Residential LLC. Our engineer on the project is Everett Chandler from Winter G E C LLC and Scott Brown. From Scott M. Brown Architect is our architect on the project. I want to thank the board for your time in considering this project. We are very excited to be able to present this to a full board. My clients and I feel this is a very beneficial project for the city and. We have been looking forward to presenting it to you and hopefully constructing it in the near future. If we could go to the next slide, please. Just wanted to give the board a couple of photos of the property so that. We have some context to my discussion. And here is the what is signed as the Market Street Inn. Looking up Market Street. The next picture, I'm just continuing to walk. Along the street so that you can see both 2224 Market, which is the building to the right, as well as 26 Market. Which is the building to the left. Again, moving up the street, this picture will show you that there is currently an existing. A walkway, stairway balcony between the two buildings. They are interconnected. And as I will mention in a minute, currently being used. As an interconnected structure. And then lastly, just sort of the. The final picture in the series, which shows you the upstreet side of the building. Go to the next slide, please. To give you a quick project summary, my clients would like to convert the property from its current use as a lodging house. To a new use as an inn, as determined by the zoning enforcement officer. This planned conversion would require three special permits from the board. Which we which the chairman mentioned earlier, one is a. For the change of use, one is for nonconforming uses, and then the third one is under the demolition control overlay district. Next slide, please. Thank you. With respect to existing conditions, the property has been used as a lodging house. Boarding house since as early as 1980. We found a memorandum in the records from March 28th, 1980, where the then code administrator. Established the approval of the property as a lodging house. It has been operated in that regard ever since. The lot itself is preexisting nonconforming as it only contains 3,273 square feet of area. And as we know, 24,000 square feet is required. We've got 54.25 feet of frontage where 120 is required. However, we are not proposing any changes to the lot itself, and so it will continue as a preexisting nonconforming lot. The existing structure, and and I am speaking only to 2224 Market Street. We it is preexisting nonconforming as to the front setback. Each of the side setbacks, the rear setback and lot coverage. I do want to mention the lot is also preexisting nonconforming as to parking. As there is or never was any off street parking spaces. While five are required for the current use and six uses, excuse me, six spaces will be required for the proposed in use. We have received a special permit from the planning board pursuant to the Newbury Port zoning offices to allow for one. Additional offsite parking spot in the municipal garage with payment into the I T I F. So we have completed that. So essentially what we are stating is that we are preexisting nonconforming as to the five spaces that don't exist. And the additional required space with the new use, we've satisfied through. The special permit from the planning board. So if I could go to the next. Slide, please. As I said, our proposed use is to. Remove the connection that we I showed you in those pictures that connected. 2224 to 26 Market Street. The 26 Market Street property will then be restored to an allowed by right one or two family residential structure. So. While it's currently being used in conjunction with this other with the 2224. 26 is going to be restored and converted back to a by right residential use. With respect to the 2224 Market Street structure, it's proposed to remove a single story structure and deck from the left rear of the rod. Existing structure and to remove a second story deck over an existing single story addition to the right rear. We are then propose, we're also proposing to remove two existing sheds. From the from the site, which is probably what is responsible for our reduction in the nonconforming law coverage. Thereafter, we are proposing two two story structures. A new deck and a stairway we added to the rear of the building. In the location of where the two structures are being. Removed. We also proposing to do renovations to the windows, doors, chimneys, siding and trim building. We are proposing to reconstruct the property as a six unit inn. All located within the 2224 Market Street structure. Currently, the the existing use is seven. Units, but again, it is utilizing the other building. So we don't want to do that. We're going to propose to put six units in the in itself. The view of the building for Market Street will remain relatively unchanged, except for the restoration work. And the addition of some dormers along the front of the property, which were found to be acceptable to the historic commission. Again, next slide, please. Again, I won't bore you, but again, we are three special permits. Mr. Chairman, what I had proposed to do is to walk through. Each of the special permits. You know, one at a time. And then we could either stop as I get through each one, or I can just continue through all three. And then answer questions. So whatever is the pleasure of the board, I'm prepared to move forward. In either way.
Let's and thank you for asking, Attorney De Shane. Let's our customers typically just. Blaze through with with all of the material with respect that covers all three of the applications you're you're, you know, the relief you're seeking. As as you see fit, and then we will address them by separate applications when we get to deliberations, but as well as questions. So just go ahead and make your presentation as to all.
All right, I will. I will move as quickly as I can.
Oh, take your time. What's that? You know, that's that's just feel free to do it all together.
All right, very good. The next slide, please. Thank you very much. So with respect to the D C O D special permit. We did work with the Newbury Port Preservation Trust. Including a site visit. We had trust members out there and they met with Scott Brown, our architect, and were very. Supportive and and cooperative in in helping us. We then filed this part of the D O. D C O D special permit procedure with the historic commission. I guess I we ended up doing double duty because. I was later told that our application would have been forwarded. By the the planning department, but in reading the regulations, I presumed that I had to file with them. So I did. So they certainly got a full compliment of all of the materials. The historic commission then held a public hearing where we went through everything. And I do have to say that it was a pleasure working with the historic commission. They were agreeable and amenable to all of the proposed renovations that Mr. Brown had suggested. And they did recommend, I believe, in providing their recommendations to you, or at least they told us that they. They did agree with our proposed work. They didn't ask us for any changes, any additions or eliminations of anything we were proposing. So that was that was a great meeting. And we are proposing to you tonight, the very work that. The historic commission has reviewed and approved. And again, I know they provided you with some recommendations. So the reason we did trigger the D C O D special permit is we are proposing to demolish. 37.46% of exterior walls. And that's going to be involved in the removal of the single story structure and deck in the left rear. Removing the single story roof deck from the right rear, removing the two sheds. And we are proposing to remove two chimneys. They were determined by the historic commission to be later additions to the structure. They were not historically significant. And so we are removing them. However, we are restoring and are reconstructing the original chimney. So that the ones that had historical significance will be restored and renovated. And remain on the property. And then with with respect to the construction, as I mentioned before. We're constructing a two story addition on the right rear, a two story addition with a deck and stairway. With the on the left rear, and then we're going to restore windows, doors, trim siding and chimneys in conformance with the plan reviewed. And approved by the historic commission. Next slide, please. All right. So just to give you a little taste of the historic aspect of the property, it was constructed around 1775. It is a Georgian style home. The commission did agree that there was some historical significance to the property. Certainly relevant to its architecture. And one of the things we really focused on was the front door. So we are restoring the front door and. I believe putting in some transom lights that everyone believes were there originally and may be covered. So. As part of what we're doing, we're going to uncover those and bring them back to their original. And not condition, but you know, the original architecture. As I said, the current use continues today in conjunction with 26 Market Street. It's seven units and we're going to do away with that. We are proposing to demolish 37.4% of the walls, as I mentioned. However, the majority of the walls being impacted are actually those two rear additions. They were deemed not historically significant. And as you will see on the upcoming drawings, one of them is literally a wall. Of modern sliding doors. So. Certainly not doing any harm to removing those. As determined by our structural engineer and Mr. Brown will speak to this in just a moment. The structures to be removed, those two back additions. Which were found to not be historically significant and probably later added to the building. They've been deemed by our structural engineer to be structurally questionable, quite frankly. And of no value for the proposed roof use. And again, we are proposing to do restoration work to the building in accordance with the historical commission approval. And all of the new additions will match the materials existing on the home today. So. We're going to use same siding trimming windows that is on the home today, matching the historical aspects. So with that, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I'd like to turn things over to Scott Brown. Scott will give you an overview of. Of what we're proposing to do in terms of historical restoration and additions to the structure.
Great. Thank you, Attorney De Shane. Scott Brown, the architect for the project. We could just go to the next slide, please. So this slide is a letter from one of my a structural engineers and. This letter speaks to the criteria for this board granting a D C O D special permit. I essentially had him out on site. For a very brief time to take a look at this very questionable area that we're proposing to. Rework on, you know, the back right corner of the existing structure and. He essentially agreed with me that we could not accomplish our goals. Without significant modification to these walls and it is. That modification to these existing walls, which put put us over the. 25% threshold for for demolition on this project, thus triggering a D C O D special permit. Next slide, please. So what we're looking here and here is is our original. Site plan that we submitted. We've since submitted an updated site plan with some very, very minor modifications. Those modifications are mostly notes pertaining to some things. That Attorney De Shane has discussed with the abutters. And the other modification to the site plan is a a slight tweaking of. This lighter lighter shaded area. On the back there, which is actually a set of egress stairs and egress platform. And with that, can we just go to the, I think the the updated site plan is the last slide here. Maybe it's 31. We could just go to that. The other thing that you'll note here. So this is the updated site plan. So you'll see that, you know, we've provided some notes with regard to fencing and. Perhaps in and just transitioning transitioning to this slide, you've seen a slight. Perhaps in, and just transitioning, transitioning to this slide, you've seen a slight modification of that. That lighter shaded area. So one of the, uh. One of the big things that we're doing here is we're separating twenty-two, twenty-four Market Street from twenty-six Market Street. And if we could just zoom into that proposed site plan there. Keep in mind that somehow this site plan has been, uh, um. Squashed in the vertical direction. So it's a little, what we're looking at here is, is a little bit dis- disproportionate. Uh, but one of the big things that we're doing is we're separating, uh, both of these buildings. They currently is, there's a connector at the third floor between the two of them. Uh, that connector provides, uh, sort of a second means of egress from. Uh, the third floor unit at twenty-six Market Street. And but that connector is also a, a long stairway, sort of extending to the backyard. And that long stairway is currently the only way. To get to the third floor unit of, of twenty-two, twenty-four Market Street. So once we remove that stair, one of the, one of the things that we need to do is we need to provide new access to the third floor. And the only place that we're able to do this without negatively impacting the existing layout. Is in the back left corner. So this is one of the main reasons why we're proposing a, a new two-story, uh, addition. Uh, which is shown there in the back left in, in a darker shaded color. So as part of that, we're removing an existing, uh, first-floor addition. Um, uh, the, the new footprint in this area is, is a slightly larger, but not substantially larger. Uh, the other thing you'll note here in the back right corner, uh, we're proposing a new second floor. Uh, footprint over an existing one-story footprint. Uh, this is the area where, uh, those glass si- sliders currently reside, which I'll show you in, in a, in a moment. Uh, this, at the second floor level is, it's currently a deck. And it's a deck which overlooks the entire yard as well as the abutter, uh, budding properties. And we have no use for this deck, so we're just planning to sort of convert that to, um, enclosed habitable space. Uh, the other thing we're doing here in the back, shown in the lighter color, is we're providing a new set of egress stairs. Um, uh, this drawing refers it to a deck, but it's really sort of a, uh, an egress platform. Uh, it's a little bit of an odd configuration. Uh, we, we have adjusted it due to some concerns with the butters. We've made it smaller. But I will, uh, note that what we're showing here really is, uh, the minimum size that we can make this. Uh, you might note that these stairs are in a little bit of an odd location. But there's some thought behind that, uh, one, we want to be able to, um. Uh, come down those stairs and end up in a place that does not impact the privacy of the first-floor units. Uh, and but we also want to, um. You know, we're thinking, uh, about how the backyard of this lays out, or trying to provide some high-quality. Uh, open space, uh, for these, uh, patrons. Uh, with that, we can go back to, uh, slide fifteen. So somehow, so, um, in the next four slides, we have, uh, the existing. Actually, we do not, um. Let's see here. So somehow, um, in the various iterations of our presentation here. We have some older drawings here. Caitlin, would it be possible for me to share my screen to show? Some, some drawings are actually a higher quality. Higher quality drawings. These are a little bit fuzzy.
Um, I can zoom in if you'd like, um. Would that be helpful?
Yeah, well, we had some earlier presentations that had a proposed drawing on the front and, and existing drawing on, on the top, but, um. I think we can just wing it without it. So, um. You know, on the bottom of the sheet, this is our proposed, you know, front elevation, as you would see it from Market Street. You'll notice that connector between the two buildings, which is being removed. Um, and again, as Attorney DeShane's has, has, has stated there, uh, this front elevation is remaining largely unchanged. We're doing three sort of, uh, notable things. One. Um, obviously, we're adding three, uh, doghouse dormers, which are. An entirely appropriate feature for a building of this style and, and period. So that's one thing that we're doing, the front elevation. Uh, the second thing that we're doing is that we are adding a, a new trim board. Uh, which is between the, the upper lower slope of the gambrel. And, um, upper, like low slope of the gambrel, and, uh, it's between that and the, uh, lower. Steeper pitch of the gambrel. So this is a trim board that was, was there originally somehow with these gambrel roofs. Um, some, you know, all over town, this, this trim board, um, somehow disappears over time. And, uh, we actually have some older photos which show this. So, so we're bringing that back. Uh, so that's the second thing we're doing. The third thing we're doing is we're proposing to add a, uh, transom window, uh, above the front door. Uh, when we look at the existing elevations in a minute, uh, there's this odd interstitial space between, uh, the top of that door and the tablature above. And, uh, some have speculated that a transom might have been there at one point in time. And, uh, it would not surprise me, uh, when we start to sort of, uh. Um, peel away the layers of this, uh, we might find that place. So that's really the third thing that we're doing on the front that, that is new. Um, we have a bunch of notes here, uh, which go into more detail about what we're doing, uh, to, to certain things. Uh, we have. We're restoring, repairing and restoring the original win- windows in the front. Uh, we're giving the builder an option to, uh, either repair and refinish the existing wood shutters. Or to replace them in kind. Uh, same thing with the existing, uh, cedar clavard shingles. They're act- she- cedar clavards in, in, in pretty good shape. Uh, but if the builder chooses to replace those, uh, we would like, that note says like right there, we would like them replaced with. Um, you know, cedar clavard, uh, with a tighter exposure, which would have been, which is a little closer to what would have been there. Um, originally. So that's the front elevation. If we could just, uh, look at the top here. Top elevation. So this is the existing, uh, this is the proposed left-side elevation. And, uh, starting in the back there, you can see, uh, those new egress stairs and, and platform that I was referring to. A note, uh, pointing to, uh, the new, uh, second. You know, story addition. Uh, the area in the middle, uh, which, uh, we are proposing for white cedar sidewall shingles on, uh, this is. This is new volume. This is our new two-story addition. Uh, this is one area where we've decided to change, uh, the siding. You know, because I think it's always nice to sort of differentiate, uh, new from the old, and then I think this is one place where it makes sense. Uh, and off to the right, again, uh, some of the, some similar notes as to what we have in the front elevation. Uh, in terms of what we're planning to do, you know, when it comes to windows. Uh, and siding and so forth. Uh, next slide, please. So on the top, this is the, uh, uh, proposed right-side elevation. Uh, there are two chimneys that are beyond, which Attorney DeShane, uh, had already mentioned. Uh, we'll see those in the existing elevations in a minute. Uh, we're proposing to remove those chimneys. They are, uh, later chimneys or perhaps put. Uh, put in place, uh, at one time to, uh, vent a coal stove. Again, not original, not, 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 not a federal period, um. Uh, chimney, but what we do, uh, we do have a chimney that is federal period, is original. And, uh, we are proposing to, um, uh, keep that and, and actually restore it. Uh, the chimney above the roof line right now is not in really good shape. It's covered with, uh, it's parched. So we're planning to take that down and, and, uh, rebuild that with a period-appropriate brick. Uh, so in the same elevation, proposing a new door, a new window. You know, and off to the right, you can see, uh, kind of a hint of our, those stairs that, uh, egress stairs beyond. And also that new sort of two-story, second-story, uh, addition. Which is over, um, an existing, you know, first-story footprint. And on the bottom sheet, this is our proposed rear elevation. And this is where you can really sort of get a sense, um. In terms of like these, you know, eager, this egress, these egress stairs and this platform up there is, is really not, uh, an oversized item. You know, it's. I've kept it to a minimum. Uh, you know, it's for egress only and, uh, not intended for someone to be sitting up there. And if somebody was sitting up there, they would certainly. You know, impede the, uh, path of travel, and that would, that would not be allowed. And, uh, off to the right, you know, that's our new two, two-story addition beyond, again. You know, um, changing, changing the siding there to differentiate the old from the new. Next slide, please. So these are a combination of our existing, you know, elevations, uh, also our DCOD calculations. And, uh, DCOD should calculations are always nice because the colors, you know, just at a quick glance, show you. Um, you know, uh, the areas where we're doing kind of the most work in. And in the bo- you know, the top, top there, that's a proposed le- left-side elevation. Uh, you can see that rather long. Stair, stairway which are, we're removing, and again, that's the only, um. Uh, way to get to the third floor. We've got a lot of blue off to the left, not necessarily because those are walls that we're removing, but, uh, when it comes to DCOD calculations, if we cover a wall. Uh, that also counts, counts against us. Um, and off to the left there in the, in the top drawing, uh, we start to see the beginning of this sort of like glass. Uh, glass enclosure, um. On the back of the building. Uh, bottom sheet, that's our, you know, existing front elevation. You can see that, you know, we have no. Uh, there's no blue there. Uh, we're making very few modifications. Uh, at least to the walls in terms of when it comes to the front elevation. Next slide, please. So again, some more DCOD calculation sheets. Uh, on the top, that's, that's, you know, the existing right-side elevation. Uh, blue areas in the middle, that's a new door we're putting, a new window. Uh, this is where you can see those two sort of slender chimneys beyond. Uh, which I said are not federal period, not, or, you know, um. Uh, not originalist structure to the structure. And then that other chimney there, which is shown in white, you know, which is parched. And that's the chimney we're proposing retain and, and actually rebuild. And off to the right there, again, that's our glassed-in area on the back. You can see. You know, see the roof deck there, uh, that we're intending to, to, to build over and, um. And, uh, on the bottom sheet, um, this is our rear elevation. Again, you know, doing most of the work in the back. And again, the blue is a little deceptive because it doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, we're, we're removing wall. Uh, but the blue also means that we could be covering wall. So. Um, you know, the thing that jumps out in this drawing is this sort of like glassed-in area at the back, which is, which is certainly not original. And this is the area that, uh, I've had my engineer take a look at, and, and it is also one location where I, why, where I, as, as an architect. You know, can speak directly to the criteria for this board, uh, granting the, the DCOD special permit. So what, so when one does a certain amount of work to a structure. You know, certain building code standards need to be met. And one cannot add a second-story addition above this glassed-in enclosure without needing the shearwall requirements of the building code. Uh, there are only two ways to do that. And, and one is an expensive steel porter for, portal frame, which is really cost prohibitive. And, um, and it does actually take a little bit of dimension. Uh, we don't actually have the dimension to make that work. There's very little meat, uh, to this rear structure. Um, and the second way to accomplish shearwall strength is in the form of adding wall, you know, and that means wall with plywood. So, so these, you know, vinyl glass, you know, sliders, again, not original, uh, they retain no reasonable value. Or, or use, and the removal and replacement with wall is, you know, what puts this project over the, uh, twenty-five percent. You know, wall demolition threshold. So, uh, you know, in summary, uh, we've worked very hard for what, what has been a very lengthy process to get to this. To get this project right. Seems like this project has been on my, um. Drawing board forever, and, uh, we think it has evolved into it, into a very good project. Uh, it is certainly a building in need of an upgrade, and, and I think we've done a very good job of striking a balance between. Between preservation and, and functional, uh, modernization. And, um. With that, I will, uh, hand it back to Attorney DeShane. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Scott. Um, if I could go to the next slide, uh, what I'd like to do, uh, one more. There we go. What I'd like to do is just run through the DCOD, uh, criteria. Um, I won't bother to read the questions, but I, I, my, my answers are actually. Um, I'm going to read my answers here because I think they're comprehensive. Um, the requested use is listed in the city of Newburyport table of use resident, uh, regulations as used. One oh five requires a special permit. Um, and so we are, uh, you know, applying in accordance with the, um. With the bylaw. Uh, there, this one I will read. The requested use is essential or desirable to public convenience or welfare. Allowing the requested in-use and the proposed additions would eliminate the existing. Non-conforming lodging boarding house, certainly a benefit to public welfare. In order to run an attractive, sustainable inn down east is proposing. Substantial improvements to the aesthetics of the structure. Which will not only make the building an attractive business asset for the city. But also right result in increased tax revenues for the city. Uh, certainly a benefit to the public welfare. Lastly, the overall upgrades proposed to the structure. And its conversion to an inn will provide the neighborhood and the city as a whole. With an attractive, convenient and safe housing opportunity for guests and visitors to the city. Which, as we know, is a much-needed commodity in Newburyport. Uh, the request will not create any undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Uh, the proposed use will likely not generate any more traffic than the existing non-conforming use. As they are so similar in function, and our intensity is actually a little less with, uh, one less unit. Uh, moreover, as part of the proposed use, it want, at least one new parking space has been provided. Although this is a slight improvement to the pre-existing non-conformance. It nevertheless is a benefit to the public welfare and convenience. Uh, the proposed changes of use and the proposed changes to, to the building itself. Will not unduly impair pedestrian safety, as there is no, are no changes or impacts proposed. To the existing suitable streets and sidewalks surrounding the property. Uh, the requested use will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system or any other municipal system. Um. Requested use is proposed in a pre-existing structure which has been used for over thirty years in a similar manner, a boarding house. With similar function and intensity. However, the structure is proposed to be renovated and upgraded. Hopefully eliminating any existing health or safety issues. The existing structure might have, or the existing use might pose. While there may be a slight increase in water and sewer requirements. Depending on how often the, um, the building is utilized, it will in no way overload or unduly burden those systems. As I said, there are currently seven units operating. We're proposing six. Uh, there are no proposed changes to the municipal drainage system or any other municipal systems. Nor will the proposed use overly burden any such systems. Given that the proposed use is regulated by the city licensing board and its Board of Health. The city will be further protected against any health or safety hazards. Overall, the proposed use will not unduly subject the immediate area, or any areas in Newburyport. To hazards affecting the health, safety or general welfare. Next slide, please. Um, if there are any special regulations for the use set forth in the special permit table, uh, we are fulfilling them, uh, and they. Those, uh, any such regulations as applicable are fulfilled by our proposed use and application. Uh, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or returning districts. Not be detrimental to health or welfare. Uh, the use being proposed is actually an allowed use with the special permit in the B-three district in which the property is located. As such, it was previously determined that the use, provided it receives the required special permit and. Review by this board is compatible with other uses allowed in the district. Moreover, the proposed structure and use is certainly in keeping with many of the buildings. Especially those redeveloped or improved upon within the B-C district. The construction will be done in conformance with all state and local building codes. And so will not adversely impact the environment. Moreover, it is proposed to renovate the structure with top-quality, energy-efficient materials and methodology. Again, minimizing environmental impacts. Aesthetically, the proposed improvements arguably constitute an improvement. To the property and will therefore increase the value of the property. This will benefit surrounding properties by increasing their values as well. Given that the ins, that ins are regulated by the city licensing board and again by its Board of Health. The district will be further protected against health and safety hazards. Therefore, the use will not impair the integrity or character of the district. Or any adjourning districts, nor will it be detrimental to health or welfare. Um, the requested use will not, by its addition to the neighborhood, cause an excess of that particular use. That could be detrimental to the character of said neighborhood. Um, we're unaware of an overabundance of high-quality ins in the neighborhood. There is, uh, a very nice inn just up the street, uh, but we do not believe that, um. Constitutes an overabundance, uh, and given the fact that our project was, um. Run as a boarding house, uh, we're not really adding significantly to the particular use. We're really just modifying it slightly. In fact, uh, it's my client's understanding that there is an increase. In fact, it's my client's understanding that there is an increasing demand in the city for attractive, safe housing opportunities for guests and visitors. Moreover, while the proposed inn is technically a new use, as I said, the property has been used more than thirty years in a similar capacity. It's been part of the neighborhood character without being detrimental. So therefore, the operation of a renovated, high quality inn proposed at this location will not be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. And one may argue will actually improve that character. Next slide, please. I think we're getting there. All right, the proposed use is in harmony within purpose and intent of the ordinance. The proposed use to our number one oh five hotel inn, which requires a special permit to ensure that it will conform to all rap, applicable regulations and that the proposed use will not be detrimental in any way to the neighborhood of the city is therefore in direct harmony with the purpose of the applicable ordinance. So requiring a special permit is so that this board can make sure that this will in fact not be detrimental to the neighborhood. And as we've argued or proposed, it will not be. The last criteria, the proposed use shall be not constructed in a manner to admit dangerous, noxious, injurious or otherwise objectionable fire, explosion, radioactive or other hazards, noise, vibration, smoke dust, odor or other form of environmental pollution. The proposed use is for the operation of it in. There will be no hazardous materials stored in the facility beyond those found in general residential structures in the city, mostly cleaning type of solutions. Nor are any hazardous materials used in the operation of the inn. The inn will not generate amid any dangerous, noxious, injurious or otherwise objectionable fire, explosion, radioactive or other hazards. We will keep our noise down to a minimum, as I'll discuss in a moment. And there'll certainly note be no vibration, smoke dust or odor or other form of environmental pollution emanating from the operation of the inn. As stated above, the inn will be required to operating performances with licenses from the city licensing bureau and the board of health, which will further ensure that we will not be conducting our operations in a manner to be detrimental. Lastly, I, I know that there is a required finding that based upon substantial evidence in the record that such historic building or structure retains no substantial remaining market value or reasonable use, taking into account the cost of rehabilitation to meet the requirements of the state building of code as it applies to historic buildings. As Scott has just explained, we are, we have provided you information as to why the specific aspects of the building that we're requesting to remove and rebuild are really structurally questionable for the proposed use. We couldn't, couldn't do things that we'd like to do to improve this building without modifying those additions. And so I do believe, again, based on Scott's presentation, we have provided evidence that at least the structures that we're taking away retain no substantial market value or reasonable use. Of course, the rest of the building, which we are only planning to renovate, the same cannot be said. But again, we have provided the information to those areas of the building that we are proposing to demolish. So if we could go to the next slide, please. So that, I, I just want to let you know, that sort of concludes my presentation with respect to the D C O D special permit. So now I'd like to move on to the special permit for non-conformities. As I mentioned, we are non-conforming. The lot itself is non-conforming, although we're not proposing any changes. The structure is non-conforming as to the front setback. As you can see, it's literally six inches off the street, which is consistent with most of the buildings in the neighborhood. We are non-conforming as to both side yard setbacks, the rear setback and the lot coverage. However, while the proposed two stories additions will result in an alteration and extension of that pre-existing non-conforming rear setbacks, because we're taking something down, putting it up, I will tell you that we are not creating any new non-conformities. And the setback of the new structures will equate to the existing rear setback of seventeen point eight feet. So the building is not moving any closer to the rear. And as far as lot coverage, we are actually resulting in a slight reduction in the non-conformity. And again, as I think I mentioned, it's probably a result or is a result of the fact that we're moving to unsightly sheds from the backyard where the footprints of the additions are identical to the existing footprints. That would be where we would be reducing lot coverage is getting rid of the sheds. So if I could go to the next slide, please. I would like to run through again the criteria for a special permit for the non-conformities. And I apologize to, to the extent some of these are repetitious, but as you know, there are specific criteria for each of these special permits. And I have to provide for the record a, I have to provide a record showing how we meet those criteria. So first, in identifying the particular use, as we've discussed at length, existing use is, is a boarding house since nineteen eighty. We're proposing to disconnect the two structures to eliminate the existing seven room boarding house structure and convert it to an allowed by right. I'm sorry, the twenty six market street property will be converted to an allowed by right, one or two family. And then we're proposing to construct the twenty two, twenty four property into a six unit, six bedroom inn, which is an allowed use by special permit. In identifying the particular specs or in which the structures do not conform, I just went over those. The lot is non-conforming and then the structure is locked, non-conforming as to a number of, of setbacks and, and lot coverage. Please identify whether the proposed use would intensify the existing non-comformities that result in new ones. I said, in fact, in obtaining the special permit, a pre-existing non-conforming use would be eliminated. So we're eliminating the non-conforming use. Additionally, if allowed to reconstruct it as proposed, the pre-existing non-conform law coverage would be, be reduced. If I could go to the next slide, I don't know if there's anything more here on this question, but I do want to remind you that we are not creating any new non-conformities and not exasperating any of the existing non-conformities. And then lastly, and I think probably one of the key criteria for this particular special permit is identifying the facts we relied upon in supporting the fact that this proposed restructure will not be more detrimental than the existing structure. And I, I will read through this. The proposed structure will not result in this, the changes proposed will not result in the structure being more detrimental to the, in the existing structure of the neighborhood. The proposed changes will result in a substantial reservation of a building badly in need of rejuvenation. The overall massing and scaling of the structure will not be significantly impacted as most of the proposed work with the accession of the proposed dormers in the front will all be done to the rear of the building. So from a massing and scaling from the street perspective, I'm not going to see a whole lot of changes, except for an increase in the aesthetics. There is no proposed change to the height of the building. In fact, we're taking down a couple of chimneys. And the proposed changes will not result in the intensification or extension of any of the existing non-conformities or the addition of any new non-conformities. While beauty is in the eyes of the beholder, the proposed improvements to the structure in keeping with the historical architecture of the structure under the D C O D will arguably result in a much more attractive building for the neighborhood, will therefore improve the neighborhood view of the structure. The proposed structure is certainly in keeping with many of the surrounding buildings, especially those recently redeveloped or improved upon. Construction we've done in conformance with state and local building codes, and so will not adversely impact the natural environment. Moreover, we are proposing to renovate the structure with top quality, energy efficient materials and methodology, again minimizing impacts. Aesthetically, the proposed improvements will arguably constitute an improvement to the property and will therefore increase the value. This will benefit the surrounding properties by increasing their values as well. In terms of the proposed use, that use is allowed under the, by, under the ordinances upon receipt of the special permit. Use will eliminate the existing non-conformity use, certainly a benefit to the neighborhood. The proposed use will likely not generate any more traffic than the existing non-conforming use as they are similar in function and intensity. And again, we're actually looking for a reduced intensity. Moreover, as part of the proposed use, at least one new parking space will be provided. While this is a slight improvement to the pre-existing non-performance, nevertheless is a benefit, not significant detriment to the neighborhood. Lastly, the overall upgrades proposed to the structure and its conversion to an inn will provide the neighborhood and the city as a whole with an attractive safe housing opportunity for guests and visitors, a much needed commodity in Newburyport. So if we go to the next slide. Okay, last but not least, the special permit for use. And again, I'm just going to go over this one slide and then the criteria. As we know, it's currently be operated as the market street inn in conjunction with twenty six market street. The use has been there since nineteen eighty. They've obtained annual operating licenses for the lodging boarding house since nineteen eighty and continuing to two thousand twenty two. In nineteen eighty seven, lodging boarding house required a special permit. So at that point, the use became a pre-existing non-conformance because we did not have a special permit to run the lodging and boarding house. However, we are seeking to change that use by special permit for use as an inn, which is six units. And that would essentially make us, if we are able to obtain the special permit, would make the use a conforming use. So that is certainly beneficial. So with respect to the special permit criteria, if we go to the next slide, please. And again, I apologize to the, for the repetitive, repetitive nature of this criteria. But, you know, it's separate special permits and, and, and I have to establish it. So I will be brief. The use is listed in the table of use regulations by special permit in the zone in which we're in and which our structure is located. Is the requested use essential or desirable to public convenience or welfare? As I think I've said many times, this use would eliminate the pre-existing non-conforming use, which is certainly a benefit to public welfare. We're proposing substantial improvements to the aesthetics of the structure will, will not only make the building an attractive business asset for the city, but will result in increased tax revenues for the city, certainly a benefit to public welfare. And lastly, the overall upgrades will provide the neighborhood and the city, as I've said, a convenient, safe housing opportunity to guests. The requested use will not create undue traffic or congestion, and I have presented this before. Again, we're not necessarily changing the intensity of the use. In fact, one could argue reducing it slightly. And as part of the proposed use, we've generated at least one new parking space for our facility, so that is a slight benefit. And although there is a slight improvement to the pre-existing non-performance, that, that particular improvement, getting the extra parking space, it is a, a benefit nonetheless. And the proposed change will not unduly impair pedestrian safety as there are no changes or impacts proposed to the existing sidewalks and streets, which have operated effectively and efficiently in this neighborhood. Next slide, please. The recuse, again, I, I, I won't, I won't repeat all of this, but as we've discussed, this will not overload the public water drainage or sewer systems. We're not proposing to impact any of those and nor are we proposing to dramatically increase our use of those. So we're not going to overload in any way. And as we said previously, any such regulations as applicable are fulfilled by the use. We are not going to impair the integrity or character of the district or journey districts. And again, the same, you've heard this before, but now it is with respect to the use. It is an allowed use with special permit. As such, it was previously determined that the use, provided it receives a special permit, is compatible with other uses allowed in the district. Moreover, the proposed structure and use is certainly in keeping with many of the buildings existing in the, in the, in the neighborhood, in the district, especially those recently developed or improved upon. Construction will be done in accordance with all state and local binding, building codes. So not, we will not have any adverse impacts to our environment. And again, just in summary, it will benefit the surrounding properties by increasing their values and providing a much needed use for the city. Next slide, please. Is there are more, I'm sorry. The applicant is unaware of any overabundance of high quality ins as we've discussed. And we believe where it's been used as a boarding house for thirty years, we're really not changing the character or the impacts that this will have to the character of the neighborhood. In fact, the operation of the renovated, high quality inn will not be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. In effect, certainly arguably will improve the character. The proposed use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance. It's an allowed use in the district with a special permit. The special permit ensures that this board has done an analysis and that we will not be detrimental. The proposed use will not be conducted in a manner to admit dangerous, noxious or otherwise objectionable fire, explosion hazards or noise or vibration. And again, as I've said, it's going to be an inn. We're not going to have hazardous materials. We're not going to admit any hazardous or noxious materials. And we will be overseen by the city licensing bureau and the board of health, which will further ensure that we're not going to have any such negative impacts on the neighborhood. Next slide, please, and I think my last slide. I do want to give the board some, an understanding of, of the, the efforts we've made with respect to the neighbors and some of the changes that we've made to the project as a result of that interaction with the neighbors. I know that some of the neighbors have sent some letters in which they've articulated their concerns. And so you may, I expect that my list will be comprehensive of those concerns. I did some quite a while ago, we did send out a notice and a copy of the plans to all the abutters. In my cover letter, I offered an explanation of what we were doing and offered to meet or speak with any neighbors that were willing to do so. And I will say the neighbors were very cooperative. We did have a site meeting where I was able to meet and discuss the site with many of our neighbors. And there were also a number of telephone conferences and emails where we exchanged information. Their concerns, I feel, were in four major categories. First of all was the construction impacts. You know, where are construction vehicles going to park? Where is the dumpster or if the support a potty will, will that be located? You know, is there asbestos in any of these buildings that we're, are, are additions that we're taking down? And if so, you know, how do we protect the neighbors? And also the hours, days and hours of when we will be allowed to work on the project. As I explained to my, our neighbors, all of those issues are controlled and overseen under our building permit. We will not be allowed to park construction vehicles in the street unless we make pre arrangements with the, you know, with the, the parking folks in the city to maybe reserve. I think you can sometimes reserve two spots for your construction vehicles. The building inspector and the building department will tell us where we can put our dumpsters and our toilets. And we'll have to follow those directions. If, as I explained to our, my clients in, in seeking a demolition permit, the board of health and the building department can require that we do lead and asbestos testing before we start ripping things apart. And if it's found to have lead or asbestos, then we are held to a higher level of, 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 of demolition procedure. So, you know, the neighbors will be protected that if there is asbestos or lead, that we will be required to abate it in, in the correct manner and we will be overseen in doing so. And then lastly, as we all know, there are defined hours and days in which you can do construction and that would be part of any demolition or building permits. And we would have to adhere to those. So there are strict regulations and oversight in place to make sure that the construction is done in a way that is protective of the neighbors and the neighborhood in general. Big concern of the neighbors was privacy. I understand that the current use has a rear deck, second floor rear deck over one of the additions, the one with all the sliders. And at times, people staying at the, at the, at the lodging house go out on that deck to smoke. And at times, people staying at the lodging house go out on that deck to smoke or to socialize, and it puts them in close proximity to our neighbors to the right. And so we have assured them that we were removing that deck and that we wouldn't be allowing anyone to congregate or certainly not smoke on any of the proposed decks. And then with respect to those right-side neighbors, we have agreed to place a fence, essentially from the sidewalk all the way down the right-hand side of the property, all the way to the corner. And then we've agreed to run that fencing all the way across the back of the property so that we will have a consistent fence on both the right side and the entire rear of the property that the neighbors had asked for. We are providing that. And then with respect to the decks, there was a question, you know, because we are putting this new deck, well, I'm sorry, I shouldn't be using the term deck. It's really not a deck. As Scott explained, what that stairway and accessway does is it provides access and egress to those upper-story rooms. And people will be allowed, you know, be able to walk out onto those decks or onto those accessways and down the stairs. The neighbors were concerned because what it did is it created a deck area, so to speak, again, at that second-story level that, you know, was relatively close to the backyard. The neighbor to the rear has a second-story deck, which is very close to their rear lot line. So essentially, it would put people standing on our stairs kind of face-to-face with people on their deck. We have no choice. We need those egresses and access points from the back of the building. However, what we've done is, Scott, and again, this was part of the revised site plan that's at the end. What we've done is we asked Scott to reduce those walkways and those stairways to the minimum width required under the building code, which reduces the size of them such that there is clearly no room for patio furniture or any kind of seating that would promote congregation on that deck. In fact, my clients have agreed to put signage out on those stairways that they are egress and access stairways only, and that there will not be a lot, you will not be allowed to, yes, for lack of a better term, loiter out there. People will not be allowed to hang out there. And we will be a no-smoking facility, so there will be no smoking signs out there as well. So we're hoping that by minimizing the side of that, the minimum required under building code for safe egress and access, by providing signage and managing the use of that, we can abate the neighbors' concerns about privacy and certainly not impact their deck, which is, again, right off the back and at that second story. So that's what we've done in terms of fencing and decks. The neighbors have also had a lot of questions about the actual operation of the inn. They want to make sure that this is, in fact, maintained as a high-end inn. And then we talked about occupancy. As we've stated, there will only be six units. Again, they talked about the deck use, and again, we're going to prohibit use of those back stairways for anything other than coming and going. They asked about management and staffing. I will say that a six-unit building does not justify and would not be sustainable if we had to have 24-hour management or staffing on-site. So we will only have limited hours, which, when there will be staffing and management on-site, and a lot of the booking will be done online as most other inns are done. We are also agreeable to providing quiet hours, after which our patrons will be required to keep the noise down. And that kind of leads to the last question, which was what we were doing in terms of landscaping and patios in the back of the building. Again, neighbors are concerned with any noise or smoking or whatever that might emanate from the patios and what we were doing with respect to landscaping. And what we have presented and what we've shown on our plan is that we are proposing to maintain two existing ground-level stone patio areas that exist today. Thank you very much. And as you can see, one of them is located just between the new stairway and the new addition. It says a stone patio walkway. And then the other one is on the right side, again, just outside of that proposed addition. And it says stone patio walkway. We are proposing to keep those there. They're there today, although they will be upgraded and made nicer. There are two water features currently in the backyard, one on the right corner, which is shown there. It says water feature. There's also a smaller one in the left corner, although we didn't show it. We're proposing just to clean those up. They're kind of cool structures, like stone structures with water in them. We're proposing to sort of restore those up, make them part of the landscaping. We are removing those two sheds in the back. And what we are doing is we are going to propose some landscaping there. The neighbors have made some suggestions of perhaps some, you know, some evergreens and some arborvitae in there. We do have limited space, but we do plan on addressing that area and dressing it up a little. And knowing my clients, when we get to that point, provided we are, you know, if we obtain the permits needed, we will reach out to the neighbors, or certainly the neighbors in the back, to let them know what we're doing with respect to landscaping and at least provide them an opportunity to, you know, to chip in and tell us what they would like. I do believe that we will be able to come to a very reasonable agreement with respect to landscaping improvements, but we're not there yet. You know, we haven't taken the time to decide which plants where, but we are going to do that and will provide the neighbors an opportunity to comment on our proposals. So we do believe that we have made ample opportunity to our neighbors to provide input to me. I do want to thank any of them that are here for their time and energy, and I do hope they are appreciative of the fact that we've pretty much agreed to the fencing, a reduction in the size of those decks and stairways to the minimum required so that we won't have people congregating. And we have committed to them that in managing the inn, my clients will, you know, maintain quiet hours, no smoking, no loitering on the decks, and keep things quiet down in the patio areas. So we're proposing to do everything we reasonably can in the management of the inn to make it a good neighbor and a quiet neighbor. So with that, members of the board, thank you for listening to all of that. And I am prepared to answer any questions you might have. Mr. Brown is available, and my clients are here too, if there are any specific questions relating to operation. So again, thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you, Attorney DeShane's. And we certainly will go around the horn and see if we have questions and such, but thank you for the presentation and the detail. So we'll close that portion of the public hearing, and we will go to the public comment section. Caitlin Sullivan's put up a slide that gives instructions on public comment for anyone who wishes to speak or be heard. Just please give your name and address to the, or just please say your name and address for Ms. Joy, our keeper of the minutes, so that she can properly keep minutes and then just speak your mind. You don't need to come down the column for or against. You're welcome to, but don't feel like you have to speak during a certain vertical of the meeting. Just raise your hand. I'll recognize you. Then just please unmute your mic, and you will have the floor. I'll recognize Emily. I believe your hand's been up first. So Emily, if you can hear us, just unmute your mic, and you have the floor.
Hi, Rob. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I wasn't sure if there's a time at the end for public comments or in relation to the last case. So I have three different things. I have one in relation to this case and then one in relation to the last case. And my, maybe my phone cut out. I didn't hear the public comments at the end of the continuance. Did I miss that piece?
The public, so we've just begun the public comment section of this hearing, so.
No, 200 to 208. I didn't hear the public comment section.
Oh, yeah, that matter was, that matter was.
I'm aware of that, but the public has a right to know why it was continued, and you also have a right to say no to the continuance.
Correct.
So I'm just trying to clarify that. It looked like it was rushed through in about 30 seconds. So I'd like to have understandings of why it was continued. I think the public deserves that.
So Emily, what I'll do is to address, we're through that hearing, but as a courtesy, of course, certainly in the interest of it being a fair question, and in that you may have missed it, I'm happy to revisit that, if only to flesh that out a moment for you. But typically, and it has been historically the custom and practice of this board for many, many years, certainly all the time I've been on, to be fairly, to exercise, you know, fair and balanced discretion when a continuance is requested, especially when an applicant requests a continuance to further refine a plan in the, you know, presumed hopes that a plan becomes better with further refinement. So the applicant's representative attorney need had submitted a letter requesting further continuance for that purpose. We have no reason to not grant that because I think it's in the interest of our community in the process to allow an applicant to hear feedback that an applicant may have gotten, especially in that instance, and hopefully to come back with a better version of a plan or maybe something else. But we don't really know anything beyond that. So we always try to move, you know, we don't try to rush it, but we try to move expeditiously only insofar as there being anyone in the audience who may be there for that hearing. We do them first so that anyone who might be there expecting to speak or wishing to be part of it, so that they don't wait around till after other hearings, only to find that it's been continued to the next, to the next hearing. So that public hearing was, a letter was submitted requesting further time to presumably refine or what have you. So this board granted it, and so they will be coming back, I believe, on the 27th of July. I'm not sure if that, if that helps or answers your question on that point, but I wanted to make sure I at least addressed it for you. Emily? Can you still hear us?
Chair, it looks like she's dropped off the Zoom call. She was saying she was having phone problems, so perhaps that's.
Okay, well, if she comes back on, it seems like, I'll tell you what, what we'll do is give Emily a moment to log back on. In the meantime, I will recognize the next hand that I see up, which is Steve DiNuzzio. Mr. DiNuzzio, you have the floor. If you could just give your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Steve DiNuzzio, 13 Summer Street. I'm a direct abutter to the rear of 2224 Market Street. I was wondering if Caitlin could put back up their presentation real quick and go to slide 31.
Chair, with your permission?
Oh, yes, please, of course. Thank you for asking.
Could you zoom in on the Market Street with the, that one, right? Zoom in. Perfect. So first of all, Attorney DeShane was very nice. We had an opportunity to do a walkthrough with him, and I appreciate his presentation tonight. I have a couple of concerns that I wanted to address, and hopefully if I go over two minutes, you'll bear with me. First, I wanted to address the fencing along the back line of the property that abuts 13 Summer Street. We already have four sections of fence, two to one side of the shed and then two between the two sheds that were already put up by New England Cedar Fence, and it was a fence that was a split cost between the current owners of Market Street Inn and our two units at 13 Summer Street. So I'd like to continue along that same line and use the existing fence person that we use for those four sections to, so that we have a uniform fence. And it looks nice, and it's what we had in the first place. So I'd like to see if that could be agreeable. The next unit, next concern would be the, I know we're not calling them decks, but we seem to call them decks all night. It seems to me that if it's only access and egress for the units on the second floor, that the ADA requirements is only a five-by-five platform and then your staircase. What I'm seeing here, even though they've made it slightly smaller, is still a deck that's larger than the deck that's currently there now, and it's going to be closer to our property line. So that's a big concern. I know they're putting up quiet hours and all this stuff, but without management and there to enforce it, we both know that if people are staying at an inn, and obviously they're not going to congregate in the front, everything's going to be done towards the back of that building, just like any other place that you would go and stay at. If there's outdoor space, you're going to use it. And that's a huge concern of ours for providing the property, that I don't think those decks need to be there. I just think you need the platforms and the stairs. So that's a huge concern of mine. The single-story that they're taking down with the deck on the second floor and they're building a new two-story unit, it was my understanding that that was supposed to stay on the exact same footprint that's there now. And I seem to have heard from the architect that that footprint is now going to be larger, which again is a concern towards the back of the yard. This drawing here, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to actually view the property in person, but this drawing that we're looking at is not to scale. It makes it look like you have a football field worth of space back there, and it's just not there. It's really tight. And anything they do larger is going to infringe on 13 Summer Street and our residential properties. Lastly, when we ask the question about occupancy, we keep it in the answer that there's going to be six units. Six units does not address the question of occupancy. So if there's four to six people allowed to stay in each unit at any given time, there could be 24 to 36 people at that property, and there's just not enough space for everything to be done in the back. And when they showed pictures at the very beginning, it was nice. They showed pictures of the front of the property, and they, I think, conveniently did not show pictures of the back of the property, so you wouldn't see the scale and what we're dealing with in terms of limited space. So those are really concerns that we have or that I have as a direct abutter. I appreciate what they're trying to do. I hope in some form it gets passed. I'm agreeable to that for sure, but certainly would like to see some modifications in the back.
Thank you, Mr. DiNuzzio.
Thank you very much.
And just to reiterate something I typically say in the beginning of hearings, when questions are posed in the form of the public comment section, I always want to make sure that any member of the public who may have posed the question during that segment does not mistakenly read the board's failure to answer those questions as any sign of intended disrespect or discourtesy. It's simply the process whereby we're listening very carefully, and questions are certainly heard and often adapted in the subsequent section of the hearing, which is the questions from the board section. So I always point that out in the event that it seems discourteous to not hear an answer if a question's posed directly to board members during that section. It's just the process and the procedure, but certainly no discourtesy would be intended, though you may well hear some form or verbatim language from that Q and A, from that public comment section by a board member. So that's just a bit of a lay of the land. So with that, yeah, and thank you, Mr. DiNuzzio. I'm going to spin back Ms. Emily Dunn. Emily, I do see your hand again. It appears we, you had dropped off, so I want to re-recognize you and ask you, at what point did you lose me?
I don't know, but how'd I do?
Emily, you have the floor.
It's on.
I didn't hear you. What was that?
Mr. DiNuzzio, if you could mute your mic, sir. We're just getting, we're hearing you as well. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Dunn, sorry about that. We, I wanted to recognize you in the hopes that you were going to log back on. I'm not sure where we lost you, but I want to certainly ask maybe what you heard last, and I'm happy to pick up where I left off. I think I was, I was walking through what had transpired on a previous application, which I certainly want to give the benefit of fleshing that out for you in response to your question on how that happened and what the, what the next step was. But I'm not sure where we lost you.
This was a public, publicly in the newspaper. It was advertised that the meeting would be tonight. So I believe with it being publicly advertised, the community at large. So I believe with it being publicly advertised, the community at large, but there also being vast amount of people writing into you guys expressing their opinions, um, for or against, have the right to understand why a project's being delayed, especially a project like this that's been delayed quite, um, quite many times. It, it hasn't, isn't the first time we've seen it continued. I have witnessed eighteen-year-olds down there, or an eighteen-year-old doing a traffic study. I pray and hope that that's not the traffic study this case is going to be using. Um, and we're hiring professionals, not eighteen-year-olds to sit in chairs for summer jobs. But I do, I'm just looking to understand why it's continued, um, for the community at large to really understand, um, why we're giving them more time and what else we are looking for that they have not prepared.
Okay, um, well, that's a fair question, and with the courtesy of the rest of the board, if you'll indulge me, members of the ZBA, I wish, since it's one question, uh, I always want to try to, um, you know, bear some, uh, additional, you know, information to, to any member of the public who might have a question about procedure. So, um, Ms. Dunn, so, so your question was about, uh, the continuance this evening. Uh, there were only two matters on our docket this evening, and the first in the order was the continuation of that application on Merrimack Street. So in terms of the order in which we take it, we just simply move in the sequence in which it's presented after we go through.
I'm not asking about any sequence. I'm not asking about any procedures. I want to be very clear. I'm simply only asking why you approved the matter to be continued because you do not have to approve a matter to be continued, especially when it's been continued this many times. I'm just asking why.
Okay, I, and, and if you'll indulge me, I'd, I'd like the opportunity to explain that and forgive any.
Absolutely.
Drag on. So, uh, as I was saying, the, the process, um, for us was a presentation of a letter by the applicant and the app, the applicant's attorney requesting more time to presumably refine their application. It's been the history and custom of this board for years that it's always in the interest of a better version for our community of an application and, of course, a better expression of the process to, um, grant that when it's requested unless there's a prevailing reason not to. Um, the board didn't feel there was any prevailing reason not to. It was requested that the board, that the applicant needed more time to refine or perhaps reflect on whatever comments they may have heard the last time. Though it came in late, it would, it came in in writing, so it's, uh, it's something duly before us. And so the board took it up. Um, and, uh, they are continued to the next evening, uh, that will be, uh, the hearing.
July twenty.
Twenty.
July twenty-sixth. Yeah.
Yes, the twenty-sixth. So, so with respect to, um, with respect to that process, you know, that's, that's why we, uh, that's why we approved it, and, uh, it's always in the spirit of a better version of, of a, uh, more thoughtful application that we would do that, unless it was you, you know, some onerous repetitive request. And in this instance, you know, the applicant that represented to the board, uh, in writing that they're looking to try to, um, work out, you know, refinements. So, um, we typically would grant that unless, um, it becomes, unless it appears to become overburdened some minute. And, and so by the way, we do that, uh, in a public hearing so that any member of the public who may have logged on in response to the public notice that you had mentioned, uh, so that they're not waiting around, you know, um, unduly into the evening. So we always do a continuance request first. It just so happened that this application happened to be first anyway. Uh, but we would always do that as a courtesy to members of the public who are here so that they know that it's being continued. They don't have to waste further time if it's not going to be heard, uh, and that they know when it's coming back.
Absolutely, and that makes sense. I believe by the Massachusetts general laws in which this board, um, is, works under that it is under the public's interest to be able to speak after a continuance and to understand why something's being continued, not the procedural aspect of it, but understanding what is missing, what would like to be refined, and, um, any other issues that may be, um, waiting to be addressed, um, after. So like, I'm not having to jump in. I do have a question in regards to the twenty-two Market Street, but and no disrespect to this case, because I think this attorney has done an amazing job, and I love that he's spoken to the neighbors. I think he's done incredible, but it would be respectful to allow the people who are here for the continuance to speak in regards to that, and maybe, um, we would have that opportunity if it was in person. We wouldn't just be able to press mute and mute somebody. We would be there in person and able to have a, like, conversation where, under Roberts', like, rules, that would be the case. And I don't know why that wasn't followed tonight, and that's my concern. Um, and my hand was raised.
It's a good point, and my, my apologies, Ms. Dunn, if I, uh, if I didn't notice your hand, or if we, um, we.
Oh, I raised it like twenty times to make sure you did see it, and I screenshotted it and I sent it to Caitlin Sullivan.
If I, if I could, if I could, I'm sorry. If I could just, uh, just allow me to finish if I could. I, when you raise your hand, if it goes up, I, I only, we only see it once. So if I missed it, I would have missed it all of those times, but it's not as though it would have gone up and down. But I do apologize. I do, that's part of the reason why, um, I always, um, I always exercise wide discretion to make sure that we have a full, uh, and open public process. So that's why, even though we're past it here, I, I want to give you the opportunity of being, you know,
Thank you.
Interested member of the public to speak if you wish to, um, know more about the reasons why it was continued. It, this is a point that you may be also interested in. Um, I've been working along with the help of members of the ZBA and, and of course, the planning office to try to hasten us back into live person meetings just as soon as possible. I believe that we will be live, uh, the next time this matter comes back. I believe that we'll be at the senior center, if not the council chambers, so.
Oh, that's perfect. I was just going to ask that in regards to law forty and law thirty for Mass General laws, and it, it looks like you need approval by the Attorney General when voting virtually, if we're going to have it repetitive and it needs to be a forty-eight hour notice when their meetings aren't, because our kids are in session, we are no longer in a state of emergency. There's no reason why these meetings should not be in person. The public has a say, and well, it's been two and a half years and we're still here today. So it's, it's nice to hear. I was going to ask the Attorney General and contact more on myself, um, in regards to this matter, because it seems like it wasn't being handled adequately and under a correct timeframe.
I, I would encourage you to do, I would encourage you to do every bit of that, um, as, as you see fit. The, um, I, we've been pressing to do this, um, live for some time. Um, it's a technology, um, drop-off that I'm told, uh, that we can't have a full and full, um, disclosure to members of the public remotely because the technology isn't sufficient. Um, either at the senior center previously or at City Hall. Um, I, I want to be live just as quickly as I suspect everyone, the rest of the world is live. Um, the fact that we're doing it this way, uh, the fact that we're doing it this way is a, is a holdover that I believe is long overdue, uh, to be, to, to return back in person. So I think that, um, um, you will expect to see, and I, I suspect we will, uh, we will hope to see you at the next hearing that this matter comes back uh, on the twenty-sixth of July, and that will be hopefully either at city council chambers, which is where we used to always be, or at the, um, senior center. So.
Yeah.
As far as everything else, I, I certainly, you know, I, I certainly do not begrudge you taking, you know, every step that you feel is, uh, appropriate and, and, uh, that you're moved to take and, and would encourage you to do every bit of that. But I do hope that you return, um, so that we can, when we take this up subsequently, that, pardon me, uh, that we can hear from you and, and anyone else.
Absolutely.
Many members of the public that, uh, that wish to be heard on that, and we wish to hear them.
Yeah, absolutely. I hope Lisa takes notes from this attorney tonight and contacting the butters and the community at large to really discuss and come up with compromises. It would be a great turn of events, and it's amazing that you guys are focusing on getting meetings back in person. I think that it's two and a half years, so it's a little late, but it's nice, better late than never, as we are breaking the law by not having these approved by the Attorney General currently. So it's nice that you're taking the steps to getting back in accordance with Mass General law. Um, and follow the rules that are displayed under the Newbury Port guidelines for the ZBA. And my question to twenty-two Market Street would just be, I'm trying to understand the parking situation in regards, it looks like there needs to be six different spots, and there are five currently. I'm unclear where that other spot is and just was wondering if maybe I missed that piece. It looks like there's, are, were they going to put it in a different location? I was just unclear. It didn't make sense.
Um, was there any other, any other questions that you wanted to, uh, address or have the board address? And, and if you, if you, I'm not sure if you caught this part of the, um, the intro, but any questions posed during the Q and, during public comment, um, won't be responded to directly, and that's no discourtesy to any member of the public posing them. They're always adapted in some form during the next subsequent, um, phase, which is questions from the board. So I'm sure you'll hear your question, if not verbatim, pretty close, but if, if there's anything else, we'd certainly like to.
I just would believe the applicant would respond to the question.
Yeah, of course, the applicant will, well, will pose the question.
Under most ZBAs that power typically run, when the public would ask questions, the applicant would have the opportunity to respond. Um, so I'm just with that, is that not the case in how you decide to run the meetings under Roberts' rules interpretation of how you interpret it, or?
That's correct. We, we run an adaptive version of Roberts' rules of order that I always describe in the beginning. Um, and that is in the, it's the, it's the discretion of, uh, of the chair to not be as formal and in doing so, um, exclude those that might not have the benefit of understanding what Roberts' rules of order are. They should, those folks deserve an opportunity to participate as well. So I wouldn't want to exclude them because they don't, you know, understand um, such a, uh, stricter. But that said, we do have to run by a.
I don't think that would, it's not a restrictor. It would allow you to.
Ms. Dunn, I'm sorry. I, I want to, I want to give you every opportunity. I just, I find it, it's challenging. I want, I want to make sure that I, I hear you and that you hear my, any response I made. But what I'll have you do is, um.
Absolutely.
If you could pose any other questions, uh, we're going to move through further questions. There are other folks with their hand up. I want to hear from other members of the public, and then uh, we'll close public comment once it's finished. And then in questions from the board, um, typically you will hear everything that was posed, uh, by members of the ZBA and then so, so, um, if there are further questions, I've sometimes will circle back and give, uh, folks the opportunity to pose them. So I don't want you to feel excluded. I just want to make sure that we continue to move forward if possible, um, with everyone having a, a voice. Was there, um, was there anything further on, on, on this application that you want to make sure, um, we heard?
I'm all set. Thank you. I appreciate it, and I look forward to hearing the applicant's response, and that's a regardless of Roberts' rules, it, it would be a thing that the applicant would be able to respond, and I'm confused why we wouldn't be following that.
Um, very good. Um, any, if there's nothing, uh, further, I'm going to recognize, um, Jacob Dumont, Mr. Dumont. Um, I see your hand. If you could unmute your mic and kindly, uh, just give your name and address for the record, and we will, uh, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, Jacob Dumont, one sixty-nine Merrimack Street. Um, I guess my question, you had already answered it with Ms. Dunn about going in person. Um, I guess a further question on that is can you confirm a date on when we will be able to know exactly when that is and not like, oh, it's the day before, oh, we can't do it? Like, is it going to be within the next week confirmation, two weeks, or is it going to be like a date? A game time decision?
I, um, I, I can, I can try to address that, but I'm going to defer to, um, our, our planning director, Mr. Port, after I first do my best. I, I have been pressing for this, and I'm, I'm not alone in this. I don't want to suggest that it's me, um, uh, sort of championing this. Um, I'm just the, um, the principal voice as the chair of the board. I, I have been remiss to say the least for months and months and months and months that we, um, that we are remote and remain remote. Um, I want to be in person. I have been, uh, told repeatedly by the city council that there is no room at the inn, so to speak, for us, uh, at city council chambers. They have committee meetings and that they occupy that space all of the time, which I, uh, you know, and with respect, I, I challenged further, uh, when I was presented with that as a response, and I said, uh, it's a public building, a public forum, and, uh, I'm sorry, there are twenty-four hours in the clock. We have to find some space. Uh, we have to find a way to do this, and if not here, we have to find somewhere else. I was then, uh, advised that the, um, senior center would be made available. I know the planning, uh, board and other, um, commissions and boards find a way to make that work there with technology, though I understand there are many challenges to the technology, though I don't fully understand what those challenges are, but, but that's my shortcoming. Um, I want us to be in person at the very next hearing. I would have wanted us to be in person at this hearing, but we were already past uh, publication, so it would have been cumbersome and confusing to the public to advertise Zoom, uh, within a certain period of time in advance. So this evening had to be via Zoom. I am, um, I am, uh, full bluster forward to be in person. We have no applications, by the way, for the fourteenth of July, which means that that meeting will likely be canceled because there's an absence of any applications scheduled, which means that the next meeting that does have applications is the twenty-sixth. I want us to be at the senior center or in council chambers on that date. Um, and so I'm told that that is, uh, likely. I don't have a confirmation of it. Um, so with that, I'll ask Mr. Port, um, Andy, do we, when will we know? I think, uh, Mr. Dumont's question is, is.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Share. Um, and yes, we have been working, as you pointed out, there are, that we do not have currently the best technology for the, uh, meetings, what we call hybrid, where folks can connect from home, which we have received, uh, strong demand for, as well as folks who want to be in the room, and that is what is important, is the good quality audio and video so that folks can tell what's happening. One of the concerns we've had is because, uh, the city council, uh, is one, one example as well. We've had difficulty with the public meeting spaces and the, uh, so-called owl cameras or equipment we're using right now because it's not, uh, always intelligible to folks at home, what is being discussed in the chamber or in the public meeting room. So in, uh, given that folks are now expecting both the ability to connect with public meetings, uh, for forums like this at home and in the public meeting space, we have to have, uh, ad- adequate equipment to do that. So, uh, we are planning on July, uh, we will, I'm telling you right now, we will on the ele- twelfth of July, uh, the ZBA's next meeting, um, be in person at the senior center with a hybrid access online. That is, uh, with the caveat that we are hopeful that that will be, um, a, you know, clearer and audible to everybody in both directions. Um, again, we're hoping to upgrade.
Andy, if I could, if I could just interrupt and forgive me, I want to just interrupt for a moment. There's nothing scheduled for the twelfth of July, so unless that changes, there wouldn't be a hearing then. Um, so I think we're talking about the twenty-sixth, which is the one that
Yeah.
have published, um, business. And so I, may I ask, and I, I mean, you don't, no disrespect to interrupt you, but how do the other boards and commissions accomplish this? Um, and, uh, you know, why is it still an issue for, for us? It feels like, and I know we're going afield, but I, I just want to flesh this out because
Yeah, no, just.
First time we, we've gotten this question. It's a fair question. We're going to continue to get it. Um, and I think that I, I, I'm sure we all would like to know, and I'm sure perhaps even you would like to know, but will, do you think, by the eleventh, will we know for sure that we'll be, that we'll be in person on the twenty-sixth?
Yes, well, we, we are planning on being in person regardless, the next meeting you have, whether it's the twelfth or the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Uh, we fully appreciate the frustration or confusion that folks may have not understanding all the details of both the technological requirements, like notice requirements and so forth. The bottom line is, uh, the planning board had some experience with it. The camera went down during the meeting at one of their meetings, and there was concern raised about that. And so we have been, uh, working with the administration to get better equipment into the public meeting spaces. In order to make sure that these proceedings are clear to everybody involved and that there is not a frustration on the general public side, on the applicant's side, or on the board's side, we're trying to make sure that the equipment is adequate. Because we've experienced problems at the planning board meeting wherein this was tested, and we've experienced repeated concerns about, uh, the audible, uh, side in particular of council meetings in the council chambers, same equipment. Uh, we have been trying to get that improved before we create, uh, a more complicated situation in which there are a ton of folks at home and in meeting spaces that can't hear each other properly. So, uh, that being said, we are planning to go ahead and, uh, as we did with the last planning board meeting, um, to move ahead with these hybrid, so-called hybrid meetings. Uh, but we are hopeful that better equipment will be brought forward, uh, to supplement, uh, what we currently have, because it is not the best audio, unfortunately. It, sometimes it is hard to hear folks, and that is one thing that we think is important to these proceedings, as was pointed out by folks here who are looking to make public comment.
I, um, I, I appreciate that, uh, and I think that perhaps we start to include in our public notice that, um, that it is highly recommended with, if it's at all possible, to attend in person, uh, that, you know, based on technology. Uh, of course, that, you know, that, that is subject to people's ability to do so, but that's how it used to be. Um, and, um, I think that, um, until technology catches up fully, um, I, I think that folks logging in or attempting to log in through that hybrid model might find themselves at a, at an intermittent disadvantage. Um, so I, you know, I'm hoping that anyone who can does attend, and I'm hoping that as soon as we're able, we close that technology gap. Um, Mr. Dumont, I, you know, I, I want to move things along, of course, in the interest of time and others that may wish to, um, to speak, if anyone, but I want to make sure that I addressed your question, uh, and in real time fleshed it out for my own benefit, as well as my colleagues in the board and as well as you and anyone else who may be listening and interested. What was there? Uh, was there any, um, anything else you wanted to raise? And I suspect that answer, though I know it's fair, um, and it's the best, uh, of the information that's available. It, it surely falls short of what we would like to hear, though I, uh, rest assured, I, I know we are all, myself included, are working hard to, uh, make it so for, for, um, a firm notice and publication for the next hearing of the ZBA to be in person, uh, with or without technological issues for uh, those that might wish to log on. Those that are in the room will be able to be in the room.
I mean, Rob, I guess with all due respect, like, yeah, your answer's okay, and you say you want to, you've been wanting for a while to get this, but as the Chair of the Board. I mean, Rob, I guess with all due respect, like, yeah, your answer is okay. And you say you wanna, you've been wanting for a while to get this, but as the chair of the board. You can push the town back more and have these in person. You could have had this done a year ago.
Not true, not true. I mean, allow me to, allow me to just.
Please don't interrupt me.
But.
And I mean, they're back in the high school. We, we have a technologically advanced high school. There's an auditorium there. Why aren't we able to use that? I mean, the town can take a little money out of the fire budget, because I mean, they just decided to. Fire boat to get these meetings in person because the attorney general still has not approved these meetings to continue in person and you have not. Confirmed or denied that fact.
So I, I have no idea. So I, I.
Meetings to carry on with due process and this is. I mean, it's a public meeting, but like some, I mean, there's probably people in town that don't have access to technology. So that's not able to be open to the whole entire public.
I, um, I don't disagree with you, Mr. Dumont. Um, you have to understand and allow me to, to explain. I, I'm a volunteer member of an appointed board. I'm not an elected official. I have no power to push the Z, to push the city council beyond simply pushing them. I would encourage anyone concerned to speak with your elected officials and compel them. You have that power. I have that power as us, as a voter. No more, no less than everyone here. Um, I have done everything I can, but I, at the end of the day, I've gotten a no, not possible. I, I can't, I can't, I can't, I, I can't force ourselves into the, into the forum. So I, I'm sure it is, um. I respect your sentiment and I certainly, I, um, I empathize and I appreciate it and I hear it loud and clear. I, uh, I'm not making any.
Until it can be in person.
Ho, ho, hold on. I, I, I did wanna, I listened to you, Mr. Dumont, so I just wanna, I just wanna finish my thought and then I, I, I will hear you again. And then I wanna kind of move along, but I, um, I have done everything I could, um, as of a year ago and, and then some, but. It's easy to, and I'll certainly accept it if you wish to lay it at my feet, though it is, um, it is not, um, appropriately laying there. I will accept it nonetheless. Um, I do not have the power to have done this, um, any sooner. I have no more or no less power now than I had or didn't have then. I've been very vocal about it. Um, our elected officials have the power. Um, and, uh, I have been repeatedly told that it is their council chamber, not ours. Um, so. I, um, I have been trying to find a way to do it. I, I, I can't speak to whether it can happen at, um, at a high, at the high school auditorium. But I'm told that the, um, that the technology, uh, and again, I, I can't speak to this in detail. Um, I, I certainly, um, as do all of our colleagues here on this board, we lend our time as fellow citizens just like you. Um, twenty years for me of every other Tuesday night, multiple hours every night. I lend my expertise and my best. Will and, and best efforts, though it's not always perfect, of course, because I live in the world and we're all fallible, though. I never stopped trying to, uh, render it more perfect, as do all of my colleagues here. This is an imperfect expression. Of, uh, of how these meetings should go. Um, I make that. I don't, I don't say that as an excuse, uh, but rather just as a qualifying detail that is worthy of being part of that. Um, that overall sort of, um, body of details. So I offer that for what it's worth. I. I certainly appreciate everything that you, uh, have said and, uh, I'll continue to, you know, fight the fight, but I would ask you. Um, have you spoken with your city, your elected city councillor? And if not, why not? And if so, speak with them again. And encourage others to do the same because we are all citizens. We are all trying to get the same thing done and I can't do it alone, nor can my colleagues on this board. Um, we need each and every one to express their thoughts. If that's how you feel and it's clear you do. I encourage you to continue to voice your and express your thoughts just as you've done this evening and I'm glad you have this evening. Um, this is part of the process, but, um, I wanna hear from you one more time, Mr. Dumont, and then I, I do wanna move along. Um, was there anything else that you wanted to add to the, the question period? Or?
I'm talking to Christine Walls about this issue about not being in person. I mean. I think your statement on you don't have the power to push the city more. You have the power to. Um, vote on decisions in the town is a new point where you can push back as a chairman of a board on the town more. Or you could just continue these meetings where they're in person. So that's all.
Okay. We, um, I appreciate that. We can't continue the meetings until they're in person because if we continue them. Beyond a certain period of time under chapter forty-eight, those applications are considered legally approved. By virtue of the municipality's failure to act in a timely manner. So we are up against that as a backstop. Um, with that, Mr. Dumont, I'm going to move along and I thank you for your comments. Um, okay. I see no further hands and I'm going to close the, uh, public comment section of the public hearing. And I'm going to go to questions from the board and, um, I'm going to, um, begin if, if, if I could, uh, members of the ZBA, I'm gonna just. I'm gonna ask Attorney DeShane, uh, you've heard specific questions, uh, that were raised, um. Uh, by, during the, the, uh, public comment. I'd, I'd like to see if you can address them, uh, if you've, uh, if, if you've. Hopefully written down what those questions I want to, um, I would to have those addressed. Um, however you wish to take them.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm prepared to address them, uh, now if I could. Um, first of all, with Mr., um, with respect to, uh, Mr. Donzio's comments, he is our rare a butter. Um, I have checked with my clients and they will agree, um, to use the same fencing. Along the back property line, which abuts his property. Um, hopefully we'll be able to integrate the existing panels into a, a contiguous fence. But in any event, my client does agree, uh, to use those same materials in, in produce, in putting the. The fence along the back property line. Um, quite frankly, my discussions with the neighbors to the right. At seventy-seven Pleasant Street, um, when we agreed to their fencing, um. They had indicated they would prefer a white vinyl fence, uh, although they will, it will be the same height. Uh, as the rear fence, so I, I, I will. Um, I suspect that we would propose to keep the vinyl fence between the two buildings. Uh, and then when we reach the corner, we'll, we'll transfer over to the existing CEDA. Um, and they will be of the relatively same height, so it, it should look consistent. Uh, it will certainly look consistent to all of the neighbors. Uh, I think the only place it's gonna look a little inconsistent would be. You know, anyone standing in our backyard, but, uh, again, my clients are willing to provide. The fence that Mr. Donanzio has requested. Um, he made a statement that he feels the decks are still too big and again. Apologize for using the term deck. They are not meant to be decks. They are meant to be egress points. And I will, um, ask Mr., uh, uh, Brown, our architect, to verify this. But in response to that comment previously. We asked Mr. Brown to reduce those decks and those walkways. To the minimum requirements under the building code. And so the decks that we're showing, as far as I can understand, and Mr. Brown can verify. They are of the minimum size they need to be in order to qualify as accessible. Um. You know, stairways and, and egress ways for those. Um. Um, for those, for those deck, uh, for those egress ways. Um.
Right, that's, yeah, that's correct, Attorney DeShane, and just, just, um, if we could just zoom into that proposed site plan for a second. You know, just from an educated eye standpoint, you know, one could, you know, comparing that lighter shaded area to the darker shaded area. On the back, right? Um, you know, they're at least the same square footage, if not, uh, what we're, you know, the new thing we're proposing is. If, if not smaller, uh, excluding the, um, the deck and stairs. So I think one can make an argument, what we're, you know, what we're proposing here is an improvement and, and has. Uh, certainly less impact on the butter because as it, you know, as it's currently stands, uh, there's, there's a significant deck. Uh, that exists, uh, which is, you know, could have a, uh, quite a few people up there, uh, seated. Um, and what we're proposing here, you're just simply not gonna be able to, not gonna be able to do that. Um, the other comment that was made is that, uh, relative to something I said in my presentation, relative to footprint. Um, so that, uh, I, you know, uh, the addition, second floor addition that we're doing in, in the back right corner. Is in the identical footprint to what is there now. We cannot increase that. Uh, because if we increase it, uh, that would make for, um, a, uh, you know, an increase in the existing non-conformity. So what I was referring to is the addition, uh, two-story addition that is in that sort of re-entering, uh, re-entering corner. Uh, where we're moving that single-story addition. So that is, um, um, uh, going to be a little bit bigger. Uh, than what's there now. And if we could just go back to slide fifteen, so I can, you know, talk about these stairs and. Should be the rear elevation. If we could just zoom into that rear elevation, um, yeah, it'd be sixteen. Sorry about that. Yeah, just zoom into the back. So, you know, rear elevation, which shows these stairs and, and, you know, these, these egress platforms. So those two doors at the second floor that, you know, I'm noting, uh, as new, uh, those are actually three-foot wide doors. By six foot eight tall. And that door on the right there, so you can see that, you know, on either side of that door, we've got about. I don't know, six, six, eight inches plus or minus on either side. So that's about four feet clear. Uh, that platform right there is a little wider than four feet. And that is because we have a very low eve line. You can see that that is clearly below six foot eight. You know, um, that is, you know, below that height of six foot eight. So, um, that's why we need to make that little bit bigger. Because otherwise someone would, you know, hit their, hit their head. And on the left side, you can see our position of the door and you can imagine what the ceiling height is inside, you know, and, uh, very, very low ceiling height. So that's why we need to push that door away from that roof line, you know, extending that platform just beyond that door. So I mean, I think this is really the elevation, which, you know, uh, begins to describe some of the issues from a design standpoint. That we're up against and, you know, kind of the reason why this is the shape and it is the size it is. And again. To Attorney DeShane's point, uh, you know, we've made every effort to make this as small as possible. Um.
Thank, thank you, Scott. Um, and I do wanna reiterate that the building. The addition that's closest to Mr. Donanzio is in fact on the same footprint. Uh, and we will maintain the existing seventeen point eight foot setback from that building as it exists today. Um, with respect to this question on the decks, again, um, we are, you know. Certainly in light of what I've learned from the other neighbors, um, we are eliminating a bad situation with the existing deck. Um, I believe people are encouraged to congregate there. They are not prohibited from smoking there. And, you know, um, quite frankly, the fear of what, um, our neighbors have about what we will have. Is really, uh, they, they don't wanna see what's happening now continue. And again, I think we've made every step possible to make sure that doesn't continue. Now, there was a question of, well, what if people violate the regulations? They violate half the, the, um, quiet time. And, you know, they're out in the patio, um, and making noise. Uh, we, we have nothing to do. Well. We will certainly provide to all of our neighbors, because we do wanna be a good neighbor. Uh, we will provide to all of our neighbors, uh, contact information for our managers. Um, and, and quite frankly, the owners that are gonna run this. Um, and if there are any violations, I would expect they would want you to call them immediately, uh, so they can address it. I mean, if things are truly out of hand, um, in terms of noise, um, there is, um. You know, we do have noise ordinances and so a call to the police department, uh, would also, uh, result in a response. So. Um, we will be there to address any concerns or problems the neighbors have. Again, you, I, I think people can understand that six units, um, just does not justify. A full-time onsite staff, uh, person. Um, there was also a question about the occupancy. I wanna be clear on it. Uh, we are proposing two. Two-bedroom unit, uh, excuse me, four, two-bedroom units and two studios. So the studios will have one bed. I presume it'll either be queen or king. So the occupancy for the two studios would be two people. Um, and in the two-bedroom units, um, we could see a maximum occupancy of four. Which means that we would not expect, uh, we would expect that at full occupancy, uh, we would have no more than twenty people. And that would be on a sold-out, you know, situation. Um, and that's certainly not, um. A, a massive amount of people, uh, by any means, and I would suggest, uh, it certainly could be potentially less. Than some of the occupancy numbers, uh, they're seeing now. So, uh, I do appreciate and respect. Our neighbors' concerns about these things. Um, but, um, we are actually looking to take. The current situation and make it better in every aspect, uh, in terms of impacts on neighbors. Now, to answer, uh, Ms. Dunn's question, um, where did we get our sixth parking spot? Um, the town, the city has an ordinance that allows for, um, locations. That are within three hundred feet of a public parking garage or parking, uh, um, lot. Um, to actually pay into, um, a fund set up, uh, it's the ITIF. Fund and, and what you essentially do is make a payment to that fund. Um, I guess in, in, and by doing so, we are allowed to consider that parking spot. As being available to our, um, our patrons. Uh, so that's how we got to the sixth. Uh, spot. And, and quite frankly, um, this site is benefited by the fact. That the, that the public parking garage is, is, is less than three hundred feet from our front door. Um, and I don't, I know if any, if, when I visit cities and I stay in locations downtown. Uh, you certainly can't always expect a parking. Um, and yet we will be able to provide to our patrons. Uh, a, a very large public parking garage that is a short walk. So, um. I, I think our patient, our patrons will be appreciative of that. And quite frankly, that is the way cities address parking, by building public parking and having them close to these locations. So. Um, we are meeting the, um, parking requirements for the proposed inn, uh, as required under the ordinances, Ms. Dunn. And, um, and I will let you know that we're lucky enough to live in a city that has public parking. And, and makes it available to its businesses. So, uh, that, I hope that answers your question of where we got our, uh, sixth spot. Um.
Thank you, Attorney DeShane. I'm gonna move through, um, members of the board with further questions. So if I can ask you, if I can ask you to. Um, to, um, just pause for a moment. Um, also, uh, Miss Dunn, I do see your hand up. I, I will circle back to you, but I'm gonna go through the, uh, this section. Which is questions from the board. Um, and with that, um, Mr. Delilah, questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, okay. Uh, Attorney DeShane. I wanna go back to the, the not deck deck. Um, I. I wanna understand why the decks, if they're, you know, probably like eight feet off the ground. If, why they don't count as being in the rear or being in the, the rear setback. Um, or, or exacerbating the non-conformity.
Um. Well, maybe, um, Scott, you can help me out with this.
Yeah, I, I, I can answer that question. Uh, Jennifer Blanche, when it comes to means of egress. Um, she does not, um, you know, and, and that's what she determines that this is, is. A means of egress, uh, it is excluded, uh, from the dimensional requirements.
I see. Um, okay. Uh, 'cause I think that gets to the, one of the special permit criteria is whether it's substantially more detrimental. To the neighborhood, uh, than the, the existing structure. Um, but if that's the, the answer. That it's simply for the purposes of the setback. To be overlooked or looked past, then, then that's okay. Um. Uh. I, I guess, Mr. Brown, um, in that there's, that there's one staircase and the two. Um, the two rear doors. I'm wondering, Caitlin, could you go back to that slide that, um. That Mr. Brown had referenced for us that, that showed the back?
It's sixteen there.
Yeah, thanks. I mean, I guess if it were truly, you know, it, it. If there were two stairs, I could understand the means of egress as a, as a. exclusion, but in that, given that it's one stair, go, you know, merging into a, a larger platform, I'm just having a hard time with that. But that's, that's more of a commentary than a, than a question. So there's no need to respond to that. Uh, okay. My next question is just for clarification, the, the stairway on the left side of, uh, twenty-two, twenty-four Market Street, that's gonna be removed, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, a, a, as lo- as well as the, uh, the, the bridge, I understand that part. Um, okay. And the parking, the parking is also sort of weird too, because it's, again, it's one of these things that the parking is a non-conforming, pre-existing situation. So there really aren't, there really aren't five parking spaces. There are no parking spaces, but they're getting credited for five. And then the sixth one is also not really a parking space. They're getting credited for one for a payment into a fund and people are gonna park down in the parking garage. So there's really no, no parking except what, what exists for, what exists on the street for everybody to fight for. I understand that. And I do understand that as that gets to the special permit for non-conformity, that might not change. But that's, uh, I'm okay with that. So, uh, that's all I have for, for, for questions. So I'm okay.
Very good.
Move on, Rob.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Delisle. And Mr. Swanton, questions?
Uh, yeah, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, um. There is a, most of the abutters comments were about things that have just been talked about. The access or decks, or whatever they are, the, um, whether people are gonna use them. You've mentioned, you know, you're not gonna allow people to smoke back there and you're gonna be clear that they're just for access. It's not really for standing around back there. And I, I like the fact you're gonna give the numbers, phone numbers to the neighbors. So if there's an issue, they can call the manager and he can deal with it. If people, and also have quiet hours, those are all lovely things. I guess my question is, I, I think one of the abutters, um, in their written materials to us said, is this going to be in writing? Where is this going to be so that we all remember it? A year from now, two years from now, ten years from now, or if you sell this to somebody else, it's still, those still become requirements. So how will this be handled so that this is in writing, these things that you say you're going to do?
Well, Mr. Swanton, um, we have proposed to do these things. We've made them part of our application. And although they're voluntary, voluntary, um, uh, activities, you know, including the fencing and things, we would have no problem with, um, those being a condition of our special permit. I, I, I would expect that it would apply mostly to the use special permit. So the board could articulate that those are conditions of approval, that these, the stairways and accessways will be built to the minimal size required under the building code. They will be, um, you know, there'll be signage. There will be, um, um, management, you know, we'll let our, our, um, patrons know of the rules and regulations, including the quiet hours. So, I believe by making them a condition of the special permit, if my clients failed to adhere to those promises, that the board and the building department would have the right to, um, you know, enforce those and/or fine and/or withdraw occupancy permits. So I think there's a very good methodology for ensuring that happens. In fact, that's why we put the fence, um, on the plan so that in approving the plan, with the fence on it, our clients would, my clients would be required to, to do it as part of, um, um, their, their permits. In fact, the neighbors asked me that. They said, well, Doug, great. You promised us these fences and, you know, these other things, but how do we know they'll happen? So that's when I said, well, we're gonna put them on the plan. And if that's the plan that's approved, we have to do it. So
Right.
I think, I, I think that's the way we expect it to happen, Mr. Swanton.
Okay. And I do appreciate that. That's why I didn't really ask about the fence because I, I'm aware that's on the plan, although there's a nuance tonight, which I guess we're going with white vinyl next to one abutter who wants that and cedar on the back, because that's what that abutter wants. So that's a little bit of tweak, but you, you gave a pretty good list. I like your answer. Um, you, you didn't, um, mention the quiet hours as far as when are the quiet hours?
Um, well, I think, I, I think we had, uh, what we wanted to do is see what, um, what is typical in the industry in town, but we would suspect it would be ten PM. After which, you know, you'd have to, uh, the quiet music and, and your level of speaking. And that reminds me, Mr. Swanton, you did mention too, um, I'm sorry, I, I, I thought you had another question, but, um, yeah, we would expect the quiet hours would be ten PM. I think that's typical and reasonable. But again, we would, yeah, maybe ten, ten PM during the weekdays and maybe eleven on weekends is what we're seeing around the city and doesn't seem unreasonable. And, you know, um, we talk about how our efforts to keep people from congregating on those stairways and exit ways. That's actually the reason we're intending to do some nice landscaping and renovation of the existing stone patios that are on ground level. I suspect we will have a nice little patio set in each of those. So what that will do is it will encourage our patrons who want to get outside and, you know, who can blame anyone for that? It will encourage our patrons to use those ground-level patios and not stand up on the stairway. So, you know, there, there is ways to direct people to conforming, and that is to provide them a nice outdoor opportunity for seating, which is at ground level. So it'll be covered by the fence. And, and we really think if we're, if we're able to provide those patios, that, you know, people aren't gonna hang out on the steps. They're gonna go sit down in a comfortable chair and hopefully enjoy themselves.
You know, I, I, I get that, but I, I just want to make sure I'm clear here. So the list, as I just wrote it down, was, you've already got fencing on the plan, but we need to notate that it's vinyl on the right and cedar on the back. That you're gonna put a sign up that says no smoking and access only for these, uh, these accessways or decks, or whatever we're calling them. And, uh, you're gonna have quiet hours at ten during the week and eleven on weekends. And, um, you're gonna also provide phone numbers to your immediate abutters with, uh, you know, on all three sides, I guess, way to say that, where they could call your management. So I, to me, that's the list and, and, uh, that I heard. And, uh, I'm, I'm glad you're amenable to having that be part of our decision tonight. So I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to move on with another question. Um. You know, in a building like this, that's a Georgian building from seventeen seventy-five, it's not uncommon for us to spend hours with all kinds of irritated people from the community, uh, but I, I just want to commend you on working with the historic commission uh, and with the preservation trust. So we didn't wind up there, uh, and that you've come up with something that, um, you know, because we have to, on the DOCD, I think you're aware, we have to judge, you know, whether the historic assets of the city here are being damaged or enhanced, uh, and I, so I commend you. It's not really a question there. I just want to commend you. The, uh, did I have anything else? I didn't. I, I just wanted to say in pass, in, in conclusion that you're the first person I remember that has put up slides with long paragraphs on them and then read them to us. It was hard for us because many of these things are very repetitive to what was said earlier. So I would just hope in the future you might consider an approach that was a, a little less repetitive, because we do tend to read stuff ahead of time too. Um, and it was just, it just makes for a very long meeting. But anyway, that's just a comment for next time. In general, um, I, my issues were around, you know, documenting the, uh, the things the neighbors brought up, uh, and we've done that and I appreciate that. So I yield my time. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton, um, and Attorney DeShane's. Um, Mr. Shannon?
Yeah, I, I've got, uh, a couple of short questions. Um. Attorney DeShane, can you explain the relationship between twenty-two, twenty-four and twenty-six? I mean, today they must be commercially linked and, and they're, they're physically linked with a bridge. What, what is the property relationship between these two today? And what will it look like if this project goes through?
Okay, um, I, I, I have to be honest. I, I, I can't define for you the, the legal, uh, interaction, uh, other than what I know. And that is, as is apparent, the doc, the buildings are, uh, they're two separate lots, you know, two separate addresses. However, as we have shown, they are physically connected. I don't know for how long, but based on the age of some of the, um, uh, materials out there, it has been a significant period of time. And I do know that in running the, um, advertised Market Street Inn, that, that building at twenty-six is, um, an integral part of that facility and they do, um, offer rooming in that building. And again, that's been going on for quite some time. However, uh, what we're doing is disconnecting them physically and then converting that building at twenty-two, uh, excuse me, at twenty-six back to a buy right a use which would, uh, both single and, uh, two families are allowed in that district. My clients are still looking at the work that will be necessary to convert that back to a buy-right use. So I'm, I'm not sure whether it'll be a single family or two, but I will assure you that it will be by right. And then that building will be, uh, sold, um, you know, under new ownership. And the inn will continue to operate on twenty-two, twenty-four. So we're gonna separate them both physically, legally, commercially, and get that twenty-six back to what it was meant to be. And that is a, a, a residential structure.
Okay, that, that explains it. Thank you. That, that, that does make it clear. And I think in going off of Mr. Brown's comment, and, and I'll take him at his word, just, just so the, you know, the public that's still on can hear it. It sounds like the decks, the non-decks, the egress platforms are as small as they can be. For them to, to, for them to function as safe egress platforms, they can't be any smaller. Can you just confirm that, either one of you?
Uh, yeah, that is correct.
Okay. And, and I, I just wanted the public to hear that because, you know, obviously, uh, there's been a lot of comments about they're awful big. Can we make them tinier? And, and I get it. I think your explanation, Mr. Brown, uh, it, it, it was suffice for me. And I just wanted to make sure the public heard it as well. I've got no other questions, Chair.
Thank you very much. Um, I appreciate that, Mr. Shannon. And, uh, Mr. Bennet, questions?
Well, I'll thank Mr. Brown and Attorney DeShane's for a thorough and comprehensive presentation and, uh, also, uh, I will applaud you both for reaching out to the community and the neighbors in the fashion that you did, uh, in, in an effort to address all of their reasonable concerns. My colleagues have plumbed the depths of the few issues that arise here and, uh, they've done an adequate job. In my mind, I have no other questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Um, I'll say that, so as to not belabor this, I, the questions I had, my colleagues more than fleshed out, and I appreciate that. Uh, going last, I often am not left with many questions, though sometimes we are. Not in this instance, but, um, I have no further questions that haven't already been addressed. And unless there are further questions from members of the board, uh, I'm going to close that portion. Actually, you know what? Before I close that portion, Mr. Denunzio, uh, just in the interest of, of full, uh, uh, access, um, I'm going to give you just a very brief moment, uh, if you have an additional question. While we're still open and I'll ask you to, uh, just, uh, kindly, uh, just, uh, you have the floor. If you could just let us know what, um, if you have an additional new question, I'll, I'll certainly entertain it.
Yeah, tha- thank you very much for the additional time. Um, I just think the quiet hours in the City of Newbury Court by ordinance are ten PM every night. So that would be, um, the, I know they suggested eleven on the weekends, but I think it's ten PM, uh, seven days a week. So I, I would look into that. I would respectfully ask that we look into this deck. I don't understand why we need that one piece. Why we can't have the platform with the stairs coming down meeting the, the deck. I don't know why we need that extra piece of decking towards the back of the property before we start the steps. I'd like to look into that first. It, it seems like it's an extra piece that doesn't be needed. If it's in compliance, it's in compliance, but it seems like it's a little too much from what I've researched.
Very good. Um, was there anything further, Mr. Denunzio?
Uh, nope. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Um, and Ms. Dunn, um, final word. I'll, uh, just ask if you have, um, anything additional follow-up or, or a new question, I will, uh, I will, um, recognize you. You have the floor.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I just had, I was gonna reiterate, um, but wasn't gonna reiterate. I was gonna share that the hours were ten o'clock as well throughout the town. Um, so just to reiterate with Steve I just said a moment ago, I don't know why quiet hours in an inn would be later than the town's current ordinance. That seems to be contradictory. And then also they didn't mention the morning hours. I believe the chairman asked for what the quiet hours would be. So I'd assume that it'd be a range, not just ten PM and eleven. I don't know. It was kind of interesting. And then the parking, also to reiterate what people have already said, I, there is no parking. So I'm just concerned about that. And then I do have a comment not in relation to this or something we've talked about. And I didn't know if the appropriate time would be after this to bring it up.
Does it pertain to this, this application specifically?
It does not. That's why I'm asking.
I'm gonna, um, I'll, I'll ask you respectfully if we could, um, if we could defer that at the moment because I, I'd like to just move through the rest of this process on, on the application.
One hundred percent. That's why I didn't want to make.
I appreciate, I appreciate the, um, I appreciate you taking the moment to, um, to ask and, and certainly I hope you, uh, you understand, um, the, the, sort of the rigor of trying to move through the, the procedure for this evening, but, um, we'll put a pin in it and, and we'll, I'll certainly endeavor to revisit that. So you, you'll have that, that question. If it's something that can be, I'll say this, um, if it's more of a procedural process question, and I don't know that it is or isn't, or if it pertains to something, okay. So if it is, I, I would ask if, if you'll indulge, if you could pose that, um, I would invite you to pose that to the planning office and you're welcome to copy me and I'll, I'll do my best to address it. But I, I, I don't think, um, and if it's something that warrants addressing further in a public forum, we'll certainly do that. But, um, I don't want to shut you down by any means, but I, I want to give you at least that as an initial, um, and an, an initial, um, direction so that it's not something that you're just waiting on, but, um.
A hundred percent. I'll wait until the end. Thank you.
Okay. Um, thank you. Okay. So I'm closing, um, members of the CBA, what, having heard the, the last two, um, follow-ons and I appreciate your indulgence. I know the evening's gone long. Any additional questions that, that, uh, come to mind or any, any of the, any of the members before I close? Questions from the board?
I have one that just came up because Ken Swanton, which is, perhaps, uh, one of our planning department people here knows the answer to the question of whether quiet time in the City of Newbury Court on the weekend is ten o'clock or eleven o'clock? Does anybody know? For sure? I mean, we can always condition this that it's whatever it is.
Yeah, this is.
Go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead. Yeah, I'm not sure off the top of my head, but I, I do know that the board has the ability, should you feel necessary to condition, um, things of that nature.
We, um, I'll dovetail on that if I could, um, sport. And, um, we have the discretion to make it more rigorous and more stringent, but we do not have the discretion to, um, to enlarge it and make it more lenient without leave of city council changing the ordinance. Um, so we can make it more, uh, more stringent as a condition. We can't grant relief to a city ordinance and say, make it later. My understanding of it, and I don't know that this is, this may be an imperfect, um, expression of that understanding, but I'm fairly certain of it, though I will check. The, um, in the business district, for instance, uh, in business, um, commercial districts such as State Street, Pleasant Street, where there are restaurants, obviously, um, the, um, the later quiet hours would apply because that's a business district where activity extends beyond eleven o'clock, to say the least, certainly beyond ten. In a residential or in a mixed-use residential district, um, I believe it's ten o'clock. But we can check on that and I'm sure you will as well. But that's my understa- that's my understanding of it. That said, we can make it, we can make it more stringent if we, uh, so, if we so chose.
If I can, um, if I can, I'm, I'm just.
If I can, um, if I can, I'm I'm just looking at it right now. Um, I, it, Rob, you were right. It does say in non-residential districts, um, or, yeah, it's in the business district, it's ten P M, but it also says, or as expressively, expressively approved. Um, so I think there is an opportunity to allow for that eleven on the weekend, but.
Could you just, could you just give your your name and address?
Oh, it's Ben Ben Legary. I'm one of the applicants. Sorry, uh, three Colby Farm Lane, Newbury Port.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, any other, uh, questions from the board?
Yes, Rob, can I ask a couple of questions?
Of course.
Uh, thank you. First, uh, first, a easy one, it could, uh, Attorney DeShane or, uh, Mr. Brown, could you just quickly describe how the, uh, the third floor is accessed? I think that sort of is a a blank for me. The third floor unit.
Mr. Delaw, currently?
Oh, no, 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 in the, in the, as proposed.
Oh, as proposed. So we're proposing a new stair uh, that's gonna access the third floor, and that new stair is going to be within this new two-story addition that we're uh proposing, and that's the the addition that, um, uh, we're actually changing the siding to, uh, white cedar sidewall.
Okay. I see. I understand. Okay, and then, um, just again, following up on the, uh, the means of access, did did the applicant consider two separate staircases at any time, you know, one, uh, one staircase, uh, dedicated for each of the of the doors um, on that second floor in the back?
Well, really, the issue with that, um, I think it's gonna make for a more inefficient layout and and a larger uh, a larger footprint, a larger larger impact on the site. And again, as you know, uh, I mentioned early on that this.
Can I interrupt you for a second, Mr. Brown?
Sure.
Um, just i- i- when you say that, you mean with respect to the, uh, I guess, the the yard below and the the interaction as between the, um, the means of access as it impacts the, um, the backyard?
Correct. Yeah, that's what I was gonna get to. Yeah, so I mean, you know, at a glance, this this whole thing has like a little bit of an odd configuration. Uh, but there's a lot of thought behind that, and part of that thought is really sort of trying to keep um, you know, the backyard, some of those out, you know, uh, high-quality, you know, outdoor areas intact. And really, to Attorney DeShane's, you know, uh, point, you know, we're really trying to sort of, uh, you know, bring people to the ground level. Um, so that's really.
Oh, sorry, finish, please.
Yeah, I mean, that's part of the reason why, you know, this is the way it is.
Okay, and that's sort of why you have the the staircase actually goes, comes down sort of uh, parallel to Market Street as opposed to coming perpendicular to Market Street further out into the backyard.
Correct. Can can you hear me? My Bluetooth dropped off.
Yes.
Yeah, and there there was another comment too relative to the 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 platform at the top of the stairs and, um, you know, as being unnecessary. And, um, so if that were to be eliminated, uh, you know, we really have sort of two options. One, you know, the stair goes straight out, and it goes straight out towards, uh, Summer Street where the Butters property is, or it goes uh, straight out towards, uh, twenty-six Market Street on the left. And that is gonna really impact our outdoor space. It's gonna cut it in half.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for those clarifications. I appreciate that. Uh, and and thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have for, uh, additional questions.
Very good. Um, any other questions before we close the, uh, uh, questions from the board? Um, seeing none, I will close that section of the public hearing, and we will go into deliberations. And again, uh, just to. Sorry?
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I might, could I just make one last statement? There were a couple of questions asked that I'd just like to address.
Um, all right, Mr. DeShane's, I I I mean, Attorney DeShane's, I I will, uh, but please, um, as brief as possible, I might.
Oh, very brief. Um, what we would suggest, uh, with respect to operation hours, we've asked for ten o'clock during the week and eleven o'clock on weekends only. Um, we would ask the board to consider those hours with the caveat that if, in fact, uh, there is a Sydney or city ordinance that requires ten o'clock quiet hours on weekends, uh, we would certainly adhere to that. So I would just ask for the board's consideration of that. And secondly, uh, but more for the neighborhood, um, consideration than that of the board, because I know you know this. But our standard of review here is that what we're proposing cannot be significantly more detrimental to the um, neighborhood. Um, and in addressing the existing back deck and the multitudes of problems it has created, I would highly suggest that while our proposed stairways are not the perfect solution in terms of the neighbors' requirements, I think that we would all be hard-pressed to say that our configuration is gonna be significantly more detrimental when, in fact, our configuration is solving an existing ongoing problem. So again, while it's not perfect, it certainly will not be more detrimental than the current situation.
Um, okay, thank you, Attorney DeShane. And just, I think what you, I I think you're saying the same thing, but just to be clear, the standard um, under the special permit criteria is substantially, um, more detrimental. So, um, but I think that's what you mean, and I believe
Yes.
you meant to say, but, um, um, because they're all terms of art, I'll just point that out, and I I I know that we all know that. Um, was there anything else? Cause I I do wanna close this portion and move on to deliberations. Um, and with that, um, we'll close the, uh, questions from the board section. We'll move into deliberations. And again, um, members of the board, we're deliberating the, um, the criteria. Uh, we have three matters before us. Um, all three are special permits. Um, special permit one, uh, is, uh, exterior demolition in excess of twenty-five percent. Special permit two, to convert the existing lodging house into an inn, which is a use, uh, change to one oh five uh, under the, um, the table of uses. And then finally, a special permit for non-conformities uh, to construct the additions of the rear of the pre-existing non-conforming structure. Um, and, um, we can address this sort of in conversation in deliberations. You don't need to, but you're welcome to enumerate them if you wish. Uh, so we'll just begin with, um, we'll begin with, um, uh, Mr. Delaw on deliberations.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I guess we'll take the, uh, the D C O D special permit first. Um, with respect to to the required findings, um, I feel, uh, as we deliberate this, that Attorney DeShane and Mr. Brown presented, uh, uh, substantial evidence to make the point that the the rear portions of the structure to be removed, um, retain no substantial remaining market valuable, value or reasonable use, um, taking into account the cost of rehabilitation um, as it applies to the historic building or structures, uh, or of other applicable laws. And I think that that they they satisfied that in indicating uh, that those rear portions of the structure were of lesser historical value, uh, and and the historic commission having, um, concurred with with that, uh, that statement from the applicant, I think that with regard to that required finding, um, necessary to grant the D C O D special permit, um, I find that that, uh, that they had met that burden. Um, and with regard to the, um, the D C O D special permit findings, um, I think one, one benefit of Attorney DeShane's presentation is that he established very clearly for the record those, the nine, the nine points, uh, relative to special permit findings. Um, and read those into the record, so I would, I would refer to those by referencing what Attorney DeShane, uh, uh, read into the record, and I, unless you want me to go through them, you know, individually, or we wanna take them on individually, uh, as members of the board, um, it seems to me that, you know, those have been covered well with respect to the D C O D special permit.
You can, you can incorporate them by reference, Mr. Delaw. You you needn't reread them. Uh, they're already in the record, um, and we all heard them, though you're welcome to, if you choose.
Uh, I will, uh, I will move on to the special permit, uh, for non-conformities, uh, because that's next on our, our, uh, our notes from the planning office. Uh, with regard to the the special permit for non-conformities, I think for me, the two, the the major issue as to whether we can, well, it's clear that there's no, uh, there's no new non-conformity here. Um, with respect to whether or not, uh, we have a situation where the the application and the proposed, um, the proposed use would be substantially, or not proposed use, but the proposed, uh, uh, renovations to the structure would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than that, uh, which currently exists. I think for me, the the main issue there is the the deck issue, and I think that in listening to, uh, Mr. Brown and Attorney DeShane, as we, you know, really drill down carefully on that issue, uh, I do think that while not perfect, it is not a situation where it would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Perhaps it's a little worse, perhaps it's a little better, perhaps it's it's the same. But I do think that relative to, um, what you have currently with the rooming house and the use of the deck on top of the, um, the left or the 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 north side, uh, rear aperture of the building, um, I think what we, what we have here as proposed would be uh, within the, um, would be within our, uh, purview to to grant the special permit for non-conformities here. Uh, and then as to the uh, the special permit for the change of use, um, to use one oh five, again, I think that, um, Attorney DeShane, in his presentation, walked us through those those nine points. And I would again incorporate those by reference, and I think that, uh, based on the the evidence that has been put into the record, uh, I I can support all three, um, special permits.
All right, uh, thank you, Mr. Delaw. Um, Mr. Swanton?
Um, I I think Mr. Delisle has done a nice job, uh, summarizing like ninety percent of what I wanted to say. Uh, so I won't repeat that. Uh, I too can support all three of these, uh, proposals, um. One thing I wanted to amplify, you know, this change of use from a rooming house with seven, essentially seven, uh, places you can room to an inn with six. It it it's, it just sounds like a better thing for the neighborhood. I mean, so that to me is that's a good trade. Um, it's one fewer, and it's it's likely to be, uh, um, a nicer place. Um, they're also making substantial investments in the building, uh, and, uh, my colleagues already talked about getting doing it correctly historically and getting the support of the historic commission. Um, everything I wanted to amplify or just add is what I said earlier. I'm not gonna repeat the laundry list, but the the, uh, putting in writing as part of this decision, the, um, a sign that says no smoking, this, these, these aren't decks, these are accessways, no congregating out there essentially. Uh, having that signage there and having, uh, it clear to everybody and the management when they're on site, they, uh, I know they're not there much, but, you know, they're looking for it, and then their number is held by the neighbors. Uh, we also need to, uh, indicate the fencing is going to vinyl on one side and cedar on the back. Uh, as far as the quiet hours, um, personally, I think we should just have it line up with whatever the city ordinance is. I don't think we should make it, uh, I don't think we should try to come up with something tonight if we're not a hundred percent sure what it is. And I, so I think our decision could simply say in line with the city ordinance, uh, the the hours expressed in the city ordinance for this the area this building is in, I don't know, would think that would be sufficient. Um, and that's it. I have no other comments. Thank you.
Very good. Um, thank you very much. Um, so, uh, we are there with me just a moment. Uh, Mr. Shannon, I believe you're next, sir.
Yes, tha- thank you, Chair. Um, I have to agree with my colleagues, um, I I can support all three of these, uh, these special permits. I think the, uh, the applicant has done, uh, yeoman's work with, uh, both design and working with the neighbors. Um, I think without that, some of these would have been hard-pressed to sell. Um, but I I'm very comfortable with, uh, how we got to where we are, and, uh, you know, with the delineation of, uh, the requirements for the special permits, uh, I again, as as by reference, um, I I think, uh, Attorney DeShane did a great job in helping us, uh, wade through that. Um, so, uh, as my colleagues have already stated, uh, I can support, uh, all three of the special permits as submitted. Thanks.
Very good. Um, thank you, Mr. Shannon and Mr. Bennet.
Yeah, uh, my colleague, Mr. Delisle, has ably articulated the rationale for, uh, why the criteria that we have to apply here have been met, and I concur in his, uh, thoughtful exposition of that, and, uh, uh, for those reasons, I would certainly approve all three requests here. I would just say that just looking at this from, uh, outside the zoning board perspective, it seems to me that this is a tired building that is being, uh, greatly improved. Uh, it provides much-needed, uh, rooming, uh, for guests into our city, which we sorely and are in dire need of. And I agree with Attorney DeShane's that, yes, it is a, it is, uh, something that we should be proud of, that we actually have a parking garage where people can park their cars, uh, and so the notion that parking is an issue here is somewhat humorous to me, actually. But in any event, uh, the the architecture here is excellent. The working with the historical commission is to be applauded uh, in every respect. This is a a very positive project for the city. Uh, and I I I think the the bitty landings there in front of those doors hardly will create, uh, any more mischief than what the larger deck may have been, may have created over the course of the last many years. So for all those reasons, uh, I approve this, uh, wholeheartedly.
Very good. And, uh, thank you, Mr. Bennet. I, um, you know, again, without reiterating things that have already been said, I, um, I too am moved by certainly the, um, the, uh, the quality of the architecture and the thoughtfulness of the design, though it's it's imperfect, um, as our as is almost everything, uh, in such a tight-quartered city as Newbury Port, which had grown up long before zoning, uh, as a, uh, a historic seaport community. Uh, properties are in close quarters, but, um, we still manage adaptive use, uh, in our time, so I think that we have to be creative and thoughtful and and have empathy, and I think it is imperfect in in its result, but it's the best version, hopefully, of perfect that, um, we can all aspire and achieve, and I think this is well-thought-out. I think the parking is, um, you know, the fact that we have a parking structure is, uh, is a major, you know, issue for me. It's it's a major sort of motivator for me uh, to find, you know, my way clear to be able to support this, because in the absence of that, it would seem to be an imposition on that street and and that area to not have that kind of parking. But what moves me most is that it's a de-intensive, it's it's a detensification, a de-intensification of the use. Um, and, um, that is, I think, as Mr. Swanton may have pointed out, if not, it was Mr. Shannon, so one of you gentlemen, uh, my colleagues had, uh, mentioned that it was a a good trade. And I I agree with that. It's a, um, it is a, it is a, um, a more favorable and less intense use to have fewer uh, residential units, however they function. So I think that that is more in line with the rest of the neighborhood. Um, and I, um, so I I thank the the thoughtfulness of this this presentation, but for those same reasons, uh, I I too can support all three applications. And, uh, if there is anything else, any further deliberations, members of the Z B A, I'll I'll hear them. Otherwise, uh, we will close deliberations and move to a vote. Um, anyone have anything further? Okay, um, I'm gonna close that portion of the public hearing, and we will move to a vote, and in doing so, I'm gonna ask the board uh, to indulge, uh, the three applications which will take separately. Uh, so I will ask a member of the Z B So I will ask a member of the ZBA for a motion and a second on first application, which is the application special permit under the, under the DCOD 22-1 exterior demolition in excess of twenty five percent. Do we have a motion?
This is Mr. Shagnon. I'll make a motion to approve the application for the DCOD special permit for 2224 Market Street, which is docket ZSP 22-1.
Second, Ken Swanton. Thank you, Mr. Mr. Shannon. Motion's made by Mr. Shannon and seconded by Mr. Swanton. A motion made and seconded, it's on the floor for a vote and I will call the roll. If bear with me just a moment. Everything just went dark on my screen. Calling the roll on the motion, the first application for special permit under the DOD made motion made and seconded, Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton. Yes, Mr. Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The eyes have it, the motion carries. And the application is approved on the special permit under the DCOD 22-1. Do we have a motion on the second special permit to convert the existing lodging house into an in-use 105 22-2?
Mr. Shagnon, again, I'll make a motion to approve the application for special permit for 2224 Market Street, docket ZSP 22-2.
This way, now this is Ken Swanton. Is this the one that we append the little list here of things that they said they would do?
Yes, yes, I think so.
Okay, so, so I would respectfully offer a friendly amendment here to append those things. If you're okay with that, Mr. Shagnon.
I, I am. Append away.
So the appended, I'll, I'll just list the appendage and count on the the note taker to hopefully get this right. So the fencing plan has to be annotated that we're talking vinyl on the right side and cedar on the back. There's going to be signage on these accessways that say no smoking, access only, and list the quiet hours. And the quiet hours are to be whatever the city's ordinance says it's going to be. And there'll be phone numbers given to the butters on all three sides of the management. So if they see somebody violating that, they can call. Is that acceptable, Mr. Shagnon?
It is. Excellent. Thank you.
Well, then I, I will second the amended motion. Good motion is made by Mr. Shannon, seconded and amended by Mr. Swanton and accepted and assented to by Mr. Shannon. Calling the roll, Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes, five in the affirmative, the eyes have it, the motion carries and the second special permit for nonconformities with amendment and the enumerated conditions included is approved. Finally, the special permit for nonconformities 22-13 to construct additions to the rear of the pre-existing nonconforming structure. Do we have a motion and a second?
I'll make that motion, Stephen Delisle, for 2224 Market Street. Special permit for nonconformities, ZNC 22-13 to construct additions to the rear of the pre-existing nonconforming structure. I guess subject to the tree and sidewalk ordinance if applicable.
I'll second it, Ken Swanton.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Motion's made and seconded by Mr. Made by Mr. Delisle, seconded by Mr. Swanton, calling the roll, Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes, five in the affirmative, the eyes have it, the motion carries and the third component of the overall application special permit for nonconformities is 22-13 is also approved. Thank you all for your patience, your indulgence and your participation and presentation. Attorney DeShays and, and Scott and members of the public who had taken the time to stay with us this evening and share your thoughts and participate as well. Okay, with that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, we greatly appreciate your time.
Have a good evening, sir. Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing portion of our evenings meetings and we'll go into a business meeting. The first matter on our business meeting is approval of the minutes of 6:14 2022. And do we have a motion, an amendment, revision, or otherwise a motion to approve in a second?
This is Mr. Shagnon. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting for 6:14 22.
Second. Correct, Bennet.
Motion has been made and seconded on the approval of the minutes of 6:14 22, calling the roll, Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes, that's five in the affirmative, the eyes have it, and the motion carries. Minutes are approved. Finally, we have other updates from the Chair and Planning Director. I, I'm going to just reiterate that it is, it has been an imperative and, and obviously it's becoming extreme and imperative that we, we must be the only public administrative volunteer body in the city that's still meeting via Zoom and I you know, I, I know everyone, Andy, I know everyone in the planning office is doing what they can, but you know, I really want to make sure that we are in, that we are in person, come hell
Yeah, Rob, let me save you and the rest of the board the time. As I said earlier, your next meeting is going to be in person with the hybrid setup. With the caveats I just explained, we're going to try to get better equipment, but you will be in person at your next meeting.
All right, I appreciate that. And you know what? You're right, Andy. My apologies. You did say that. It's just been a little bit of a, it's been a lengthy evening, so I, if I missed it, I just wanted to make sure that we you know, we're spending, we're, we're spending time, you know, addressing it and we should be spending that time, you know, doing the business of the board. So I, I certainly appreciate all that you've done to get us there.
One follow-up question on that? If I may?
Yeah, of course, Mr. Delisle.
Andy, how long would we be in the hybrid mode before going back to just pure in-person meetings?
Well, my understanding is there is still a public request that the remote access be provided. So our plan is to continue to provide that. If if you're asking whether or not we abandon the remote access, we have heard constituents that are now expecting that now that the pandemic has demonstrated the the board's ability, of board's collectively ability to engage the public more than just in, in a fixed meeting room until, you know, eleven o'clock at night. So with that being said, our expectation is to continue that, and that is why the administration and our office and others are looking into better equipment built into the rooms that we meet in for public board, board meetings, whether it's a permanent board or otherwise.
So just for clarification, that would mean that the hybrid function would be that people can call in or, or use Zoom to ask questions of the board as the board sits in a in a room and some people come and sit in a room live in person, but other people can be in their house or wherever participating. Is that fair?
That's correct, and that's exactly what we're trying to accomplish. We want that to run smoothly. I mean, and in fairness, I, I do believe in public participation that's as broad as it can be and as participatory as possible. So one of the things I want to make sure is that these meetings run smoothly and because the audio has been sometimes for a camera went out and one of the meetings that the planning board tried this in. We're trying to make sure that this runs smoothly. But that being said, I, it's another forum for public participation now that folks are expecting in addition to board members, applicants and, and the general public wanting to be able to participate remotely when they're, they're not able to physically be in a room for whatever reasons they, they may have. So, so yes, our intention is to continue that ability to publicly comment in the room or remotely and just manage that with the chairs.
Wow, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you, if you have a thought that you'd prefer, you know, for instance, in person only, if there's a, a thought, you know, of some other nature, please let us know. Welcome whatever input, but we've been hearing on both sides, folks who both want to get back in person. But when there was an attempt, for instance, with the planning board to do that, there was an objection that there was no remote access. So, so we, we've been hearing on both sides, folks who want to be able to participate. And not just participate as general members of the public, but also applicants and board members who, for whatever reason cannot be there, they want to maintain that ability to still patch in. And so we are trying to continue to maintain that now that the pandemic is over.
I see. Yeah, okay. I think that, I, I, I wonder if that's, you know, something that should be of a temporary in nature as opposed to a, a function forever. That, that seems like, you know, i- i- if you want to, if you want to make the effort to be there, you got to make the effort to be there. I don't know, maybe, maybe the rules have changed forever, who knows?
I, I, I think they've, I think they've changed forever, you know, Stephen. I, I think that, that's the new world order is now that, you know, it's been demonstrated. I mean, this is just my sense of it. I don't know if I'm right, but I, I would be remiss to think that it will ever simply go back to, you know, compulsory fiscal attendance because the technology, if the technology lends itself, it's more inclusive. There are lots of folks that probably didn't attend because they couldn't and discovered that they could attend and participate in this techno, in this, this electronic means, this digital means, and it, it's going to be hard to, you know, that, you know, it's going to, it's going to be hard to, you know, to unring that bell, I think, you know. So I think the inclusivity piece alone is probably going to be the litmus that drives this, you know, to always be in this sort of hybrid matter, but as long as we're, you know, as long as we're in person. If the hybrid piece is, you know, is, is a in addition to and an improvement to the principal, the principally physical in-person meeting, then I think it's it's better, but I, you know, I think we need to get back in person for sure. In any event. I, I want to take just a quick moment and, and I want to, before we part company, I know it's been a long evening, but I see Ms. Dunn is still here and I know that in the interest of of, of, of living up to a, you know, I said we were going to put a pin in that. I'm going to take a moment and Ms. Dunn. With, you know, certainly with respect to the fact that it's, it's, it's a late evening, I want to give you the opportunity to to share with us your thoughts. It's, it's sort of part of the public process and I'll give you, you know, the opportunity to just, if I ask you to just exercise the courtesy of, you know, is, as I think thorough but succinct as you feel you, you can be or should be, I'll, I'll leave that to your, your judgment. But if you, if you would like to share something with us, I'm certainly apt to hear it.
I should have a point of order just for a second.
Sure.
Ken Swanton. I mean, I thought under the open meeting law, we can only discuss things that are on our agenda.
Correct.
And it's, so I just want to, hopefully you see this as something, I'm seeing the agenda here in front of us. And it's really not fair to the public to go into a topic that is not on the agenda because other people might, might have wanted to have been here for this. So I guess that's my
Absolutely. I couldn't agree more, and I would love to save my two curveballs for next meeting. I could not agree with you anymore. But I would like to state that I do believe it is a hindrance to the community at large that we have waited to do hybrid meetings versus going back in person. I believe what everyone has said in regards to technology makes absolute sense. But we could have gone back a long time ago, parallel to all of the kids in this community having gone back. We are no different when it is a college community, when it is a work environment and you are working with people in China, Belgium, Brazil, all over this world. Technology is our friend. When we are neighbors and we live next door to each other, the least we can do is meet in person. And I believe what Stephen was saying could not be reiterated any more clearly. He said it perfectly, and I highly disagree with you, Rob. But we are a community in Newburyport. We are not doing business with people across the world. I don't know if you learned that in your Harvard Law School development program, but that that is not where we are at. We are a small community doing a couple of things as neighbors and being in person. You should be making the effort, not you, but people who are coming in and would like to speak to be in the meetings. I agree complete with what Stephen was saying.
I, I, I think, you know what, I, I think you are more right certainly than than I think we're, you know, I'm giving you credit for. I, I do, I, I don't disagree with any of that. I just know that it's been, it's been a challenge for us to say simply, it should simply be in person, and if you're not there, you're not there. That would be my, that would be an ideal. I just, I, I just, I suspect it might not happen, but I want it to happen that way as well.
Absolutely. And I just want to, with respect to that, make sure board members know that they need the Attorney General's approval. If they are doing remote into those meetings, they need special privileges for not being in appearance. It can't just happen when we do go hybrid. It needs to be approved by more clearly and it should remain that we're following the letter of the law that is in our ordinances as a town, as well as the state which governs our laws based on our town.
Read.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. And certainly with deference to the point of, of order, you know, I, I agree with that, but I, I, you know, I certainly wanted to take a moment and I suspected that's what this was going to be the topic of, and I, I think it's just a continuation of what we discussed, but I think this all goes away when we're in each other's physical company at these hearings and the public has the ability to attend and see us and we see them, so.
Could I make one of the, just, I hate to say anything else, but I, I like you, I'm delighted we're going to be meeting in person again. I, I, I think it's wonderful. It's pretty sad that we're the last board that was allowed that they found room for at the end, if you will. It's pretty sad.
I agree.
And, and it's I certainly will be talking to my city councilor about that. And I would encourage us all to do that because it's not up to us, it's up to them. And, you know, and I'm just very disappointed in them to, to, I don't, I don't know if they knowingly did this, but it happened and we wind up having these meetings till ten o'clock at night to discuss one topic that if we were in person, it'd be so much easier.
I, I'll tell you, Mr. Swanton, you know, and I, I absolutely agree. Let me share with you what I've been, what I've done. I specifically raised it with the council and was specifically rebuffed and told it's not my choice. They call the shots, they schedule that room, that's their room. And I responded immediately with, it's the people's room. It's our room. But I was told it's a scheduling conflict and I simply could not gain us access. And it has been the bane frustration of
I'm not saying you haven't. I know you've been pushing so hard on it. I'm just disappointed, you know, in, in this whole thing, but I'm looking forward to you know, not sad, we're going to meet again next time. I'm actually going to see some of you guys for the first time. This will be exciting. Let's go do it.
Good point.
I move, I, can I move, we adjourn?
We have a second.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all those in favor, and you can just respond with an I to adjourn. I.
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 Any, no votes, any abstentions, seeing none, the eyes have it, motion carries and meetings adjourned. Thank you all for your indulgence and apologies if it dragged on in my hand, not intended that way, just I want to make sure we get through everything, but thank you all. Have a great night.
Night. Have a pleasant evening.
Thanks. See you, guys.
Thank you.